Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the planning board meeting of March 9th.
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth, yeah. Why does they say that? Okay. So, my name is Lucy Bissin. I'm the chair. And I welcome you all here. And I called the meeting to order. And I would ask Christine if she would do the roll call.
Roger Dupre.
Here.
Joshua Nigene.
Here.
Michael Markot.
Present.
Lucy Bissin.
Present.
Myself, Christine Kidridge. Amy Smith.
Here.
And Alex Pine.
Here.
I'm told that Ms. Cox will be a few minutes, fifteen minutes later. So, in the interim, I will appoint Alex to be our voting member on this issue. Okay? And adjustments to the agenda?
None.
Are there any correspondence?
None.
Okay. So, we have a public hearing. Davis Land Surveying LLC on behalf of Carti Development LLC has submitted an application for development review and subdivision approval to construct a nine-lot subdivision on the remaining 4.14 acre portion of tax map 144 lot 175, formerly 267 Central Avenue, located with frontage on Suzanne Street. A new road off Suzanne Street will be created and is intended to be accepted, an accepted city street. And Craig?
Thank you. So, we have a new application from Davis Land Surveying LLC on behalf of Carti Development LLC for the creation of a new nine-lot subdivision and the creation of a new road to be designed to city standards off of the northeast side of Suzanne Street. The existing parcel is approximately 4.14 acres, and it was originally part of a larger piece that did have frontage off Central Avenue, but this new subdivision project will not. The road itself is, will align approximately with Robert Avenue. And the project will be serviced by City Water and City Sewer. And all utilities, electric, phone, and cable will be underground. The project is designed or estimated to be, or to create approximately eighty-six new vehicle trips per day. And with projects like this that create a new road that is designed with the intention of being accepted as a city street or is eligible to be accepted as a city street, we require a performance guarantee, which is 125 percent of the cost of furnishing, installing, connecting, and completing in good working condition, all of the street grading, paving, storm drainage, utilities, and other similar improvements, including maintenance until accepted by the city as specified in Article 13, Section 12. The road itself will create just over seventeen thousand square feet of impervious area. And the applicant is proposing a series of catch basins and culverts that will discharge to a level spreader and will ultimately discharge into the Central Avenue drainage line. The area, there's also an amount of wetland in that area. And the applicant has conducted a natural resources survey, as well as applied for a permit from a DEP for wetland filling. There is just under, or there, yeah, there's just under fifteen thousand square feet of wetland that they're proposing to fill. And by staying under that fifteen thousand square foot threshold, they're not required, wetland impact compensation or mitigation is not required. They have taken certain steps to reduce their impact, like using steeper grades. And as well, you can see that lots one and two have a shared driveway that reduces their impervious area as well. So, we first received an application February fourteenth, sent out comments, Public Works, Police, Fire, and Planning. On March ninth, received a revised application, and, which addressed several of our comments. But I would direct your attention to our attached staff comments, particularly planning comments G, H, I, and L. And I'll start with, I'll start with comment L, if I can find it. Proposed contours on the site plan and grading and soil erosion plan appear to indicate a grade higher than eight percent between contours 228 to 30. So, for standard, you know, city streets designed to be accepted as city streets, max grade is eight percent. And in that instance, there's about a forty-five, fifty-foot stretch where it's a little higher than that, eleven, twelve percent maybe. So, we're asking the applicant to address that. Going to letter I, update the signature block. That's just a quick fix. We provided a PDF. Looking at letter G, provide a building envelope that takes into account the approved wetland filling areas with this project, meaning only show the area outside the wetlands to remain and the setbacks. And then H, each deed will be required to have a map filed with it that shows the extent of building envelope and clearly identifies the wetland area. So, our concern here was that since the project is already very close to the fifteen thousand square foot threshold, that any individual action by the new homeowners, whether they want to put addition on their property, whether they want to make some changes in their backyards and impervious area, that will very quickly exceed that existing, will go from fourteen thousand, nine hundred ninety-one, very quickly over fifteen thousand. So, we just want to put it into the deed, the allowable, buildable area.
And just as a clarification, that doesn't mean that they couldn't fill more wetland, but they'd have to get a DEP permit to do that. It might be required to do mitigation. So, we just want to flag that for future homeowners.
And so, moving to the Public Works comments, I won't read them all, but they're largely unaddressed. And that was partly, there was some delay on our end getting comments out, and, you know, their end as well. But we're not too, too concerned. Most of these are, we're comfortable with them being conditions of approval. They should be quick fixes. And with that said, we, you know, staff, we don't have any additional comments. We, staff recommends approval of the proposed project with the following five conditions. One, that remaining staff comments be addressed to planning and public works satisfaction prior to the start of construction or the issuance of an excavation permit, whichever happens first. Number two, that a note is added to the site plan. Prior to any certificate of occupancy being issued, the applicant's designing engineer shall submit a final inspection report to the city indicating all site improvements, including stormwater system, have been completed in accordance with the approved plan. Number three, that a note is added to the site plan pursuant to Article 13, Section 11, that if development has not occurred as defined within the scope of this code within two years, development review approval shall expire. The applicant may not begin construction or operation of the development until a new approval is granted. Number four, a note is added to the plan that no lot or parcel of land may be conveyed and that no permit may be issued by the city for any building or other permanent structure within the development until the completion of the street grading, paving, storm drainage, utilities, and other similar improvements specified in the plan, and the acceptance of any public improvements by the city unless a performance guarantee has been provided to the city's satisfaction in accordance with Article 13, Section 12 of the Zoning and Land Use Code. And lastly, number five, no building permits be issued or construction activity occurs until evidence of MDEP approval for wetland alterations has been provided to the city. So, I guess with that, we'll open it up, see if there are any questions from the board.
Okay. I have, I'll start. Under Public Works, D, I, what's a level, what's the level spreader? What's that? Can you make it into lay terms, not Public Works terms?
So, essentially, it's a raised kind of lip that instead of having water form a channel and go quickly, it spreads out over a larger area, and you have a much thinner sheet flow of water. So, it basically dissipates the water over a larger area to reduce the speed of flow and just allow infiltration to happen more readily.
Okay. Is that on, on the pavement or on the?
No, it would be, well, maybe the applicant can actually point that out.
Yeah, I'll ask Mike when he comes up. Okay, that's fine.
But it's, I believe it's headed towards the, where it outlets, so it's, it's over land flow. So, it's, it's going to be, you know, on a grassy area.
Okay. Okay. All right. Anyone else have any questions for staff? Yes, Amy?
I just had one question, just because I'm not used to reading these kinds of plans. So, the developer will also put in all the other utilities, so electrical, cable, no? Or is it, is it just stormwater and sewer?
They will be stubbing those out, I believe, for the homeowners. But it would be, then there'd be individual connections that would happen when someone buys a lot. They would need to pay to extend into their site.
Okay. So, it'd be stubbed at the entry to the development or at the end of each driveway? Just trying to understand how.
Uh, let me see if I can zoom in on this plan and see.
Perhaps we can get Mr. Godo to explain that?
Yeah, although I might be able to actually point it out on the plan, which would be helpful.
Okay.
So, certainly like the sewer line, you can see right here, it's actually in the road.
Yep.
So, it'll come the whole length, and then people would, you know, pull it into their individual house lot. Same thing with the water line, which you can see here with the W's. There's a storm drainage as well. I'll see where the, I don't know if they've shown.
That says underground power to pull.
Yeah, so there are going to be street lights that are required by ordinance, so there will be electric the full length of the street as well. So, I don't know as far as like the individual services to the house, if, you know, not everybody wants a telephone line. I don't know where the telephone company will pull line, but there will be electric pulled.
Okay.
Since they are doing it underground, I assume there's a conduit that they would just run it through.
Go under the, okay.
Yeah.
Thanks. Great on the underground utilities.
Yeah. Any other questions to, so shall we bring up the applicant and?
Oops, I'm sorry.
Are there any, I mean, may not be quite germane to the discussion, but are there any pedestrian facilities included with this?
There are not. So, Suzanne Street has no sidewalks. There's no sidewalks to connect to, so they weren't required to put in sidewalks.
And then in terms of, just looking at an aerial image, it doesn't seem like there's too many opportunities for interconnection on a pedestrian basis with the surrounding streets either.
Um, yeah.
Outside of vehicle connection.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, Woodville Road down here does have a sidewalk on the other side of the road. If they were going to connect, then there'd have to be, I don't know, I guess, an easement or something.
Or pulling it off the shared driveway perhaps, down that, that property line.
Yeah. So, the applicant hasn't proposed to do that. We don't have, and it actually, yeah, we don't have anything that requires that they would do that.
Okay. Mr. Godo, would you like to come up and, and fill in the blanks?
What plan would you like me to fill out, Mike? I guess there's revised plans, I believe, that have the March eighth on them. It might be...
Let's start at the...
Okay, so those are the old ones. So, if you keep rolling down.
Oh.
It might be, it might be at the end of the, is that the...
Um...
At the end, behind, after the, after the watershed maps, right there.
Uh, okay.
There you go.
All right. Have I gone too far?
Yeah, that one, that's probably the best one.
Is that one good? Okay. Let me see if I can get this in a better view for you. Is that good?
Thank you very much. So, my name is Mike Godo. I'm here with Eric Smith, the developer behind me. Stewart was away, so I'm here as second seat, I guess, to try to walk this one through the discussion. The level spreader is at the end of the first thirty-inch culvert as you come in to the sewer main. There's a sewer main hole, yeah, right on the corner, just around the corner. There's a culvert operate out right there. And there's a level spreader right on the edge of the right of way. So, it's right at the edge of the right of way. If you blow it up, you can see it, but it's hard to see. But that level spreader is at the end of that thirty-inch culvert. This culvert doesn't need to be thirty inches, but because it's crossing a wetland area, the DEP is looking for thirty-inch culverts so that the critters can work up through the culvert. They want it buried a foot in the ground and, so that the critters can work up the culvert. So, at the end of that culvert, there would be a level spreader. It's shown as a, yeah, right there. Yeah, yeah. So, it's within the right of way. The engineer to satisfy Public Works comments is working on the plan as of today. I talked with him earlier today. So, we're going to have revised plans with staff hopefully this week, and hopefully we'll have a discussion. So, all of the issues that were brought up at the Public Works are easy for us to deal with, as well as the planning issues that were easy for us to deal with. All utilities typically come down the center of the street, but every lot will have a stub before the street is paved. There'll be a stub going off for water, sewer, gas, whatever might be out there, and power and communications. Typically, CMP will put some transformers, and you might come off the transformers and go to the houses. So, all of those will be stubbed in. And lots one and two share a driveway, but they'll probably have their own utility stubs coming down each side of the driveway to each lot. So, that's the way, that's the way the construction will typically take place. I think there was a level spreader that was, the utility was interconnection on Woodville. There's actually, the road, as you notice, is curving there. There's actually a common area that is owned by the Woodville or whatever the association is there. We have no rights to access that street. That's why we didn't propose any connection. That's why we ended up coming in where we are now. The street right of way where it comes in there is like fifty-one to fifty-three feet wide, then it goes down to forty feet. So, it takes the gap between the two lots that are on either side of the road on Suzanne. So, those, those folks will now be corner lots with, with access to the public court when, when the court is accepted by the city. I thought there was one more. I might be missing, so. I think the only other thing that I would say is that the effort, I think that Stewart may have talked with you about the effort of trying to do an individual plan for each lot. We're hoping to avoid that. We're going to record one plan. But we are going to put mathematical dimensions on the plan that said this area is okay for development, this area is not. We want to give the person on like six, seven, and eight, if they want to do something more in the backyard, we want to get them the ability to go farther out if they want to go and get the wetland permits and secure those permits and pay. If there's an in lieu fee or something for them to pay, they'd have to do that. But it may be worth it to somebody to do that. So, we want to keep the envelopes where they are, but we want to define what staff is looking for. Every deed refers to this plan that's going to be recorded, and every deed will have, and plan will have some notes on it that will say that they can't alter anything. And if that doesn't work with staff, then we'll work with staff to make sure we get something in a deed that makes sense. So, I think that's all. I can answer questions.
Sure. Mr. Dupre?
Mike, the level spreader and the culvert, the level spreader is diverting water to the culvert?
No, it's at the end of the culvert, before it enters into the wetland finger. So, the water flows through the culvert and goes into, it drops into a stone trench. She did a nice job explaining it. Drops into a stone trench, builds back up, and goes out through the stone. So, that makes it, that forces it over a thirty-foot area, or fifty, was it thirty-four or fifteen? Might be fifteen. It spreads it out over that fifteen-foot area and try to sheet flow it.
So, the culvert is an open culvert or is it closed?
It's an open culvert, buried a foot into the ground.
Yeah.
So, you're, so you have ground, natural soil in there, so the critters can go down through it.
Thank you.
Again, typically, we would have put a fifteen-inch culvert in. But today, if you're doing a wetland crossing, DEP is looking, and the AMICOR are looking for logic culverts, minimum usually thirty-inch, buried in the thing so that critters will have that. Instead of going up over the road, they can, I'm not sure how would they direct them to that. So, we haven't been asked to put traffic signs yet.
I was just going to say, maybe you need to put, you know, like the deer crossing sign.
Or put their favorite food that way to get them to go that direction. I'm not sure. But it does, it does allow for those crossings, and that's, that's been more active in the last few years.
One more question. In Public Works, the drainage, it says the low point at two plus eight one.
Yes.
What does that mean?
That's a plan profile. On our plan profile sheet, we have stationing every hundred feet. So, two plus O is two hundred feet. So, two plus eight one is two hundred and eighty-one feet from the beginning of the road. And that's just a length along it. So, there is a, currently on the profile, there is a, it would be back with the other drawings, there is a low point that's in there.
Yeah.
The Public Works is suggesting that we add a couple culverts. Unfortunately, we can't add a culvert because we have no place to discharge it. So, right there. So, you can see over to the left of the sheet, on my left of the sheet is where zero plus zero is.
Yeah.
And as you...
Sorry.
Yeah, that's all right. You see the sewer main hole is the next bump, and then you see a grade going down. So, that's the profile of the road. And the other question was about the grades in the road. You can see that the profile shows an eight percent grade going up. So, that's the maximum grade of the road going up to the top of the hill, and there's a vertical curve at the bottom and a vertical curve at the top. The surveyor copied my grading plan, which had the error of the two grades that were too close together. Those are one foot is, it should have been over a little bit farther with it. So, I, that was my issue. But the, the engineering drawings are correct, that there is an eight percent grade there. So, so that's the low spot. What we're going to do is, is do a swale. If, I think if you go up one sheet, it'll be the other one, but, oh, yeah, right there and go over a little bit. You see that building seven, you see there's a squirrely line that goes around the building at two twenty-four, I think it is. I can't read it. And it comes out in the front where she just had her hand over in the front of the building, over on the other side, the right side. That, that contour comes in to pull the water away from the house. Put a swale in there. We'll do the same thing with lot eight to deal with the Public Works issue.
Can you all sit down?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Nigene?
Just as a quick question. I read through the environmental report, and it indicated that there were no streams or verdant pools on the, on the property. Is that correct?
Correct.
On the entire expansion?
Yeah.
Okay. That's, that's all I needed.
Yes.
And you, Michael?
Just here, as I think it was mentioned earlier, that electricity will all be underground.
Utilities are all proposed to be underground. Power and...
So, even though you'll have light poles...
We will have light poles.
...that will be fed from the ground.
That will be fed from the ground up. That is correct.
So, no overhead wires.
Yeah.
Okay.
Unless the city, we have to do it according to the city standards, which I don't think they require the wires to go overhead, but, yeah, I'm pretty certain they'll come up the pole.
Our plan says otherwise.
Yeah.
Hi, Smith.
Just a question. So, once this body of work is done, what comes next? Is a homeowners' association established? What about...
There may not be a homeowners' association from this one because there is no common area to speak of, so the lots will be deeded off to individual homeowners or to a developer who will build the buildings.
Who might do all, the whole neighborhood?
Might do the whole, all the buildings.
Okay.
Eric is going to be, Eric Smith, the developer behind me, is going to build the road and put the utility stubs in and that kind of stuff. So, that's all his responsibility.
So, then, if, when somebody's ready to do more with it, comes back to us or?
No.
No. This is it.
This is it.
This is it.
They just go for a building permit. So, they would apply for each individual lot for a building permit and file the necessary, you know, plans for the building with the coenforcement for that.
Okay. And then just last question. With those building envelopes, sort of, what's the biggest house somebody could build in that envelope?
All the homes shown are a ranch with two-car garage, and that's likely what's going to be built in there, a small, first home buyer's home. And with, and again, they're all going to be ranches with a two-car garage. And so, the parking question that was brought up earlier, or in one of the staff reports is, is it's a two-car garage, so they can park in the garage as well as out in the front of the garage if they want.
Mr. Pine? Thanks.
As part of the developer putting in the street, are there any plans for any street-side improvements, or is it just going to be the street itself? So, street trees, is there any verge?
There are street trees that, there are street trees that are required by ordinance, and then there's the street lighting. There is no sidewalk, so as you, as you had asked for before. So, yeah, those, those improvements will all be done as part of the street.
This is probably a question more for staff. Do we have anything on ordinance about streets that have shared vehicle and pedestrian traffic on them in terms of design standards to make it friendlier for pedestrians with curb, stuff like that?
I'm not aware of any. Maybe Director Hediger knows if there's anything in our street standards.
You, there is a, I was going to call it the Bike Pack Committee. It's not, it's called the Complete Street Committee now. They are supposed to be reviewing significant road improvements when they're proposed by Public Works and going out to bid to see if they can make provisions to accommodate bikes and pedestrians. I'm not sure actually how often that happens, but that is, that's in the policy to occur. So, if they were resurfacing Central Avenue for some reason, and there wasn't a bike lane out there, it would have to be taken into consideration. Can that road accommodate it? What's the striping pattern going to be involved, on-street, off-street parking, things like that?
Yeah, I was also wondering about it in terms of overall street design, sort of giving you the visual cues for speed and things like that. I know it's not as important on this street because it is a dead-end street.
There are a series of standards that we look at every time we do a street in the city of Lewiston, and depending on what you're doing, you have different widths. Here, we're doing a court, so it's twenty-four foot wide of pavement. So, that's what we're doing here. But in some other areas, we might be doing a, a street that is forty-two feet wide, and it may require bike lanes and it may require sidewalks. So, there are standards in the ordinance, depending on how big of a project you're doing. Again, here, it's a, it's a small neighborhood, and it's intended to be a narrow road. In my experience, the narrower the road is, the easier it is to share, okay?
Okay.
Because you won't have the speed. You know, you put forty-two to fifty, the pavement out here, and the speed will be high. Okay? So...
All right. Ms. Cox? And I'll get back to you.
I think a correlating question would be what type of pedestrian treatments are on Suzanne Street, since it's the inlet? Right? And do you know?
There's, there's no sidewalks on Suzanne.
Yeah, so you don't need to create sidewalks to connect to nowhere?
Yeah.
Smart.
Mr. Nigene?
Just a quick question on, if the city, I guess this is the question, if the road isn't accepted by the city, is that contingent on whether or not the project goes forward? And then also, is that the decider on whether or not you'll have an HOA or not?
The, the road can't be accepted by the city as a city street until such time it is fully constructed. And typically, if you construct it and it's inspected during the construction phase, if you construct it in accordance to the plan, my experience has been is the city has been accepting those streets. And so, there's no question. Now, if for some reason the city didn't accept this street, then we wouldn't need to get an HOA to deal with the maintenance of the street. There will be like an agreement between lots one and two to share the driveway limits on this project. But we don't need an HOA for that purposes. Previously, this project was approved as a cluster, I believe, and the lots were smaller or similar, but they had an HOA for that to deal with common area and other things that were required under the cluster. Here, we just made it a standard subdivision.
Okay. Everyone? Okay. In that case, I will open it up to the public, and if you wish to speak in favor or against this project, please go to the podium and state your name and your address, and you will have one chance to speak, and you will have three minutes. Go. Go.
Thank you, my name is Bonnie Thomas, I live at Five Doian Avenue, you'll see it, it backs up to this. We've had many meetings about this before, a couple, a couple of times people have tried to develop this area and we were told that it's the same type of land that's in Bro Park and that the city would never allow building permits on that. Because no matter how much fill you put in, there's too much water. It's a swamp, basically, it's a swamp. Our house was built in seventy-eight, my parents built it. We're still dealing with, you know, so much water coming in. Seventy-eight. I mean, you know, you can't tell me, the one that's just been built on Central Avenue, she can't even mow her backyard because the lawnmower sinks. So I don't know, they said there are no streams or whatever, I don't know what's running through there, but it's a swamp. So I, I don't know why all of a sudden this is back out here. I mean, we were told they would never give building permits. I'd hate to have them do all this work and spend all this money and then not get any building permits. I mean, they tried to build one house on Central, it filled up in the basement, that's fine, they filled it. That, that's gonna crack. You know, they have the culvert out on Central and again, I'm just comparing it, I don't know if it's the same or similar, I'm not saying that. The first rainstorm, half the driveway of the second house was gone. They had to come back in and fix it. It's, it's a mess. And I strongly encourage, go look at the land. Go look at it before, because honestly, what I'm hearing here, it's almost like buyer beware. Okay, they're at fourteen thousand ninety-one feet for the wetlands? Well, so if one parcel wants to add and they're gonna hit that wetlands, is that gonna bring it over fifteen and then they have to take care of all of that? Cost and everything? That's ludicrous. That's just my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak in favor or against this project?
My name's Bill Thomas, I live at Five Doian. I see this land every day. It never dries out. It's very unstable, you can't walk on it. I'm curious, you're filling an awful lot of land here, where's all that water gonna go? I'm just curious. I mean, you're, you're taking four acres of wetland and you're filling it, where's that four acres of water gonna go? Just curious if anybody has an answer for that.
Okay.
I'm afraid it's gonna go in my backyard.
I just, I just wanna clarify, it's not four acres that's being filled, it's fourteen thousand nine hundred ninety-one square feet, which is-
Yeah, okay. And, and the land between this development and the two new houses in the front, that's also wetland, that's also very wet. By the time we fill this all in, I was, I'm just curious, it's an awful lot of water. Is it gonna go in, is it gonna go in the concrete creek or is it gonna go? I'm just curious as to if anybody thought about where all that water's gonna go? 'Cause it never dries out, so that, that tells me that, um- That tells me that there's a constant flow of water into the area, otherwise I would think it would dry out. So eventually, like I said, are we gonna have a swimming pool or? I'm just curious if anybody has, has anybody in this room ever even been on that land or even looked at that land? If you step off, you're not gonna step back. It, it's really soft, I'm just curious as to what we're gonna do with the water.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you have some comments on that, Mr. Gatto?
I can try to address someone.
Sure.
Let me see if I can find you the utility plan again.
So Shelley already said one answer is, the colored prints might be the best one.
Oh, okay.
There's only fourteen thousand square feet, fourteen thousand nine hundred, fifteen thousand square feet of wetland that's being filled. The rest of it is slopes quite significantly. That is the, there's the post-development watershed plan right there. And the water in the street is designed to go down to the thirty-inch culvert that we talked about earlier. And the water comes from Woodville.
Drive.
Yeah, this, water, you know, comes down over the hill this way. Go, there's a driveway culvert here, goes through the thirty-inch culvert, then it drains all the way across over to here and then it goes into the concrete channel. And we did a significant stormwater study that we submitted to the city, that you may have a partial copy of, that the city looked at to make sure that we weren't doing anything in terms of the runoff to increase the runoff more than what it is today. So we've dealt with the stormwater, with the studies that we have.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there anyone else in the public who'd like to speak for or against? Okay, in that case, I will close it and bring it back to the board. Any further discussion?
Now, everything slopes from the top down to central?
Yes, everything goes from the top if you, she left the cursor here. So the high point is up here in this corner?
Yeah.
And you can see all the contours that are going around here in circles. This contour is going like this, landform is down this way and then over in this way, the landform is towards us and it goes naturally down through this area here. And then they are correct, this is all wet in here. And we did a stormwater study to say how much that wetland would be impacted with water less than two inches and then it will ultimately come out at this end over here. So where we're developing is higher. Where we're coming in, soft. Okay, and that's why we're getting wetland permits to, to fill it.
Ms. Cox?
And, oh, sorry. The other, one other thing is that all the buildings that we're posing out here will be on cross walls, there'll be no basements.
Yeah, okay. So one of the things that I just heard you say to the two questions that we heard during the public comment period, is that because of this amount of development and the planned water capture, there might actually be less water rolling in from the top of the hill?
The, the standards are that you have no increase in the speed or rapidness of that water going off the site. And we've met those standards under the stormwater criteria. Will there be more volume of water going off over a longer period of time? Potentially yes.
I'm actually positing that there will be catchments and means for dealing with water that does not exist currently.
That's correct. We are, we are catching stuff. But again, we're looking at existing condition to proposed condition. So we're looking at the increased development and treating that increase for quality and quantity by not letting it flood downstream any greater than what you see today, according to the engineer's calculations.
Right. Okay, anyone else have any questions or comments?
Just to make sure I'm understanding this, so basically in the lower left, that's, or lower right of this map, that's the high ground, right? Looking at the contour lines.
Yeah.
And that high ground extends up the right side of the map? Or does, or does it slope? Like, I guess what I'm wondering is, you know, where, where's the water shedding from that hill? Both in terms of going into, to this development, but then also just the surrounding land? Like what, where, where's the water flowing here?
I'm sorry, I'm looking, I'm trying to look at the map. So you got a high point here, it looks like you got a drainage flow going this way?
Yeah.
According to the engineer. And it looks like there's another drainage flow over here that goes down through the culvert, comes back out and goes over here. So-
Gotcha.
I'm sorry, I'm wavy a little bit on this mouse here, but, but the, they had to do a watershed study and you'll see there's multiple watersheds. Can you go up to the first sheet? Sorry, I took your clicker and asked you to go, right? Yeah, so this is the existing condition, okay? So the watershed that we're studying, is this, is this larger one here? We're studying that watershed and to some extent, this other sub watershed right in here. And today, it comes off the hill here and generally, the engineer says general flow is in this direction. That's his flow line, that's what he's doing his calculations on. Even though over here, it takes longer to get there.
Yeah. So basically, there's sort of, the hill's over on the right and then the low spot sort of runs through the middle-
Yeah.
Up and curves up.
But here, the contours are quite far apart.
Mm-hmm, it's very flat.
So that's where it's ponding. That's where it's wet, that these folks are talking about. Up here, you should be able to walk and not get your feet wet.
Gotcha. So basically, like lots, lot two is going into an existing sort of low-spot drainage area, right?
We'll have to go back to the other one.
Six, seven and eight.
Six, seven and eight are in the wetland area.
Yeah.
Lot, but it looks like lot two is sort of over the stream that was mentioned before.
It's over the flow path, not a stream.
Flow path, okay.
Okay, flow path versus stream, okay?
Okay.
And the flow path is where the engineer believes the center or the longest path. They, they have to do their studies based on the length of the flow. So they have to know where is it flowing existing, what's the longest path existing? And then they go into the, to the subcategories when they do this one and they're looking at two different flow paths because we're breaking it up with the road and forcing it through the culvert. You know, so everything on this side of the road, sorry, everything on this side of the road is going through that culvert now, where before it may have gone straight down. But this flow over here is still staying in our same spot.
And in terms of the development, so you're gonna, you know, if this gets approved, the road would be put in, would the lots also be cleared of vegetation to the-
They'll be cleared, the question is whether the, whether Eric will do that or the next person ends, but the lands would be cleared and filled in. And to keep the permits valid, then we need to get that fill done within three, two years to start and five years to complete to keep that. So those are gonna get filled sooner than later.
Okay.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
Just a question, Lucy. In relation to your home, where is it in regards to this map and the, the project?
I think this is the avenue up here, I believe.
Is that Doian Avenue?
Yes, that's Doian, I think.
The last house right there.
Right there? Yeah.
And that is all swamp. I don't care.
Behind your house where those X's are?
It's swamp.
Well, based on that, looking at the flow pattern, your house is in that flow pattern.
Water going, all I see is-
This is, this is the flow pattern here, over here. That's, I think, a watershed boundary, I believe, or soil boundaries. But again, I'm, it's a little hard to read this, but their, their house is elevation-wise much higher.
Much higher, it's still-
Yeah.
So how much water can put in, how high this house is gonna creep?
Sorry.
Okay, excuse me, sir.
Yeah.
Okay, are we, I'd entertain a motion, Mr. Markot?
I was just wondering on that last discussion, nothing triggered the need for a retention bond?
We are detaining the water in the wetland. As long, we can detain it in a wetland as long as we don't raise the elevation of the wetland by more than two inches. Used to be six, now it's two.
So it won't exceed the two?
It won't exceed, it's, I think it was less than an inch, when I looked at the study.
Okay.
You know, but-
All right. No further discussion, in that case, I will entertain a motion. Someone want to make a motion?
I believe Alex is voting in my stead on this one, I don't know if he wants to make a motion.
Yeah, you can make a motion. Well, it's, it's right there.
First time for everything, you're gonna be great.
Right there. You just read it off and make sure- Okay, make sure that we include the conditions.
I will make a motion that development review and subdivision application submitted by Davis Land Surveying LLC on behalf of Car-Tie Development LLC for the Car-Tie Development subdivision, a nine-lot subdivision on four-point-one-four acres off the northeast side of Suzanne Street, tax map one forty-four to one seventy-five, meets all of the necessary criteria containing, contained in the zoning and land use code, including but not limited to Article thirteen, Section four approval criteria and Section five coordination with state subdivision law, and that approval be granted after the conditions raised by the staff.
Correct.
Which you need to read.
Okay. So including remaining staff comments be addressed to planning and public work satisfaction prior to the start of construction or the issuance of an excavation permit, whichever happens first. A note is added to the site plan prior to any certificate of occupancy be issued, the applicant's designing engineer shall submit a final inspection report to the city indicating all site improvements, including stormwater system have been completed in accordance with the approved plan. A note is added to the site plan pursuant to Article thirteen, Section eleven, that if development has not occurred as defined within the scope of this code, within two years, development review approval shall expire. The applicant may not begin construction or operation of the development until a new approval is granted. A note is added to the plan that no lot or parcel of land may be conveyed and that no permit may be issued by the city for any building or other permanent structure within the development until the completion of the street grading, paving, storm drainage, utilities and other similar improvements as specified by, specified in the plan and the acceptance of any public improvements by the city unless a performance guarantee has been provided to the city's satisfaction in accordance with Article thirteen, Section twelve of the zoning and land use code. And no building permanence be, permits, excuse me, be issued or construction activity occur until evidence of MDEP approval for wetland alterations has been approved by the city.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roger, any further discussion? Yes, Mr. Najee?
I would just like to say that this, this series of parcels certainly seems to be challenging to meet the requirements of and has both Lewiston Public Works and main DEP are involved in the project. I am, it gives me a level of confidence, so.
Thank you. All right. Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Joshua, Joshua Najee?
Yes.
Michael Markot?
Yes.
Christine Kittredge?
Yes.
Amy Smith?
Yes.
Alex Pine?
Yes.
Lucy Bissin, yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. I'd like the record to show that Ms. Cox is, has joined us and so she will return to a voting member. And other business. The planning, can you please have your conversation in the hall? Gentlemen? Gentlemen? Gentlemen, could you please have your conversation in the hall? Thank you. You can have that.
Couple maps in there.
Yep.
I can't take that home, right?
Yeah, you can home.
Yeah?
Yeah. If I really want it back, I'll give you a call. No, you're good, take it. Recycle, that feels great.
Hey, yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with that either. All right. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, but not everybody has access and can print it and all that good stuff, so.
Ooh, he got a special one.
The planning board amendment, so other business, planning board amending the Design Lewiston Guidelines Section two C buffering and screening.
Okay.
Ms. Norton?
Last time, we looked at some changes to the Design Lewiston standards. The planning board provided a number of helpful suggestions to staff. So we've revised the two pages where buffers are discussed based on comments received and are looking for further discussion, any additional edits you might wanna consider and looking to be able to have the, the board potentially adopt changes tonight. I can go through them if you want, but, you know, okay, all right.
I, I think we've, you know, we went through them and I think if anybody has any questions, they can ask them at this time. Ms. Cox?
Yeah, I just have one question and we went back and forth a little bit about this,
Yeah, I just have one question, and we went back and forth a little bit about this, Shelley, so this isn't more like, I'd like it to say it, it's more like, is this what we want it to say?
Okay.
Is my question, in that nature. So on page nine, as the case may be, in the buffer design where we see the edits really start, you know, in completion, we talked about adding language like consistently. So, at a minimum, the buffers shall consist of one of, more of the following techniques throughout. So the nature of, they could do a fence for 20 feet, and then trees for 20 feet, and then brick for 20 feet, and I don't know what developer, and I don't want to design for like the random 2%. So I'm fine with it the way that it is, but it doesn't read as though we want one consistently for the length of the buffer zone. And if that's where we landed, or if that, because I remember you, I think, were one that had some desire for it to intend to say something else. So I don't, I just, that's the only thing that I was left questioning, was where we landed. And this might be where we landed, and that's good, but it's worth asking out loud.
Yeah, good question and discussion. So I went back and I listened to the video and realized that actually the question you were asking me at the last meeting, I'm not sure I was answering it the way I intended. So, I don't know as I was intending that there wouldn't be any deviation in, so I could see situations where there might be an appropriate type of buffer along a boundary for a certain area, depending upon what's adjacent, and then there might be a different one that's more appropriate in another area.
I mean, people put nice brick fencing for 20 feet off the road and then supplement it with shrubs all the time, and we don't say, ooh, it looks tacky. So, I'm fine with the way this reads, but I just wanted to gut check that it's the way you wanted it to read.
I think that's a good discussion for the board to have right now and see how people feel about that, because we can certainly revise the language tonight.
Roger?
Just something minor, when I was looking at the buffer design and reading it the first time, it says the minimum height of 46 feet at installation, till I realized it was four and a half feet.
No, no, it's, it's, it was four, and four is deleted and six is added.
And I apologize, that's...
The deletion doesn't show with a four.
Fours are, fours are really frustrating because the, the strike-through that goes horizontal looks invisible on a four, so...
Oh, because the way fours are shaped.
It's right where the line for the four is.
It's right where the line is, so it's like, you need to have another one.
So the intention is that it's six and the four is struck through.
So it used to be four, and now it's gonna be six.
Yeah, but that, that's not the way I was reading it.
Yeah, I know. It's very easy to do it that way, though.
Did you have concerns with that?
Hey, 46 feet, why not?
That is a big vinyl fence.
Yeah, ooh, ugly. Josh?
Um, just, just to speak to the, to the variance in, in the materials used or the types of buffers, I, I personally think that whenever somebody decides that they're gonna use it as a design element or a style element, it does improve the overall appearance. So I'm, I'm really kind of happy with the, with the wording, because the last thing I want is a shiny vinyl one-mile-long buffer.
Right. I concur, for what it's worth. I would love to see somebody have the opportunity, based on this guidance, to use one or more pieces and vary it over the length as a, to have choice.
Okay.
One thing I'm curious about, it just sort of popped into my head, we say, you know, minimum of one of the following techniques, right? But then all the little pictures show multiples, kind of, right? Like, you have an earthen berm plus planting, or you have a fence plus planting, or you have, you know, taller plantings and, you know, less of a, less of an apron. And I wonder, I mean, is there a situation where we only go for one? Like, do we really actually mean we'd like someone to use multiple all the time?
Yes, Shelley?
Just flipping to that section. So... Yeah, so, you know, it's, it's a little interesting, so page nine, we're talking about, essentially, we had bullets, and I'm numbering now, so there's one through five options of, of things. And the, we've added that language to number five, which was the fences and walls, because there is only examples on the following page of fences to also have vegetation, not just to be a fence. Otherwise, it seems like it's not much of a buffer if it's just a fence, and there's all these other vegetative options. So, the intent here now is to essentially require vegetation with it unless there's, you know, literally not space. But, I think that that's a good question. I feel like there's still, personally, for me, as I read this, it's, it's a little unclear. We've got these nice drawings, you know, the wide buffer with the earthen berm, the six-foot-high wall with dense plantings, it's a nice wide area, and then we've got this narrow planting with the six-foot-high fence. It's unclear, kind of, there's a level of staff or planning board, depending upon who's doing the, making the decision, whether it's staff review committee or planning board. It's left up to the board, I think, to determine if what they're using is inappropriate and if there should be more. So, if they're just putting in a fence, to be able to point to this and say, you know, no, we want to see vegetation with that fence, or what you're proposing is very narrow, you have the space, we want to see it wider. I think there's a, some latitude here to be able to do that. But if the board would prefer to have it be more prescribed, I think that that's also an option. So it's kind of, I think there's a, a line being walked here between being really specific as to like how, how wide your buffer has to be and, and making it really broad versus allowing something more narrow. So there's, they're trying to kind of thread the, the needle.
I think, just to be clear, I, I'm looking at this, and, yeah, I think having it be too prescriptive is definitely a danger. I think what I'm wondering about is that, you know, based on the, the images that we show in here, like, they don't, they don't match the wording that we have. You know, they all sort of show two. And, and like, I'm not saying that we should be like, it must have vegetation and a fence.
The description of earthen berm includes vegetation on top of the earthen berm.
Right, and it's...
On the other page.
Yeah.
So that one is, that top one is showing just one treatment.
Oh, just one?
Yeah.
So if you read, you know, on, what's, page 11, the next page?
Mm-hmm.
It says for wide buffers, narrow buffers, it, it discusses having trees as well as the fence.
Okay.
And, and stuff. So I think this is where the clarity, a little, it's clearer, a little clearer there, perhaps, if you read it.
What we could do, I don't know if this would help, so the wide buffer with earthen berm picture really kind of correlates to what we're numbering as number three on page nine, potentially. And number five on page nine, we could say correlates to the wide buffer with a six-foot-high wall or the narrow buffer with a six-foot-high fence or wall. So depending upon what space is available, you know, those two options would be available. So if it helps to kind of draw a more obvious correlation between the description on the prior page and the pictures on the second page.
I think it might.
We could do that.
I think that's what Alex is looking for, something a little bit where it, it meets, you know, the, the number on nine matches the description and the pictures on 11. So I think that might be something that, if, if you can add that, I think that would be a, a good, a good thing to do.
Okay.
Because it makes it clearer as to, you know, what we're talking about or asking for. Ms. Cox?
I think I asked this last time, and so if I didn't retain the answer fully, I apologize in advance. But I think part of, I don't know if it's quite what Alex is getting to, but it's, it's a question I'm left with either way, is what we're looking at is the how buffers should look and not the when. And I, and that's, and that's just simply because this is where the language needs to be approved. But there is somewhere else, a document and a, probably a table, that says if it's industrial, it requires a wide buffer of five feet or more, and if it's an NCA lot, it needs a narrow buffer or more. And so the, like, the trigger for, for which of these buffers we would, in doing our role, we would look at and say, that is a very large industrial site and it requires a wide buffer, and so we would be expecting to see one of these wide buffer treatments. Is that right?
That would be wonderful if such a chart existed. So, um...
I did not ask this before.
So, while we, I think you did a little bit, but less, with less specificity, we kind of danced around this last time.
Yeah.
So, we have requirements that you have a buffer, and then you're sent here to determine, you know, kind of what you're allowed to do for a buffer.
So again, we get some choice in those moments.
So we have some choice, we don't have something as specific as what you're saying, which is certain uses require the larger buffer or require this type of treatment or that type of treatment. We could certainly explore that if, if the board wanted to go in that direction, but we don't have anything really in the ordinance that's that prescribed at this time.
Hi, sorry.
Do we want...
Just, just a follow-up. I, I think it would be worthwhile, and I don't think that it needs, I don't think we need to overthink this or over-engineer, and I'm not encouraging staff to endeavor to do so. But I think a simple, when you're transitioning from an industrial zone bordering a residential zone, which I would not expect if it was an industrial zone bordering an office zone, right? Like, you don't need to put up a big berm between the, the car impound lot and the, you know, the car dealership commercial zone, but that perhaps only in places where it's a transition from a residential zone to a, you know, significant other non-adjacent use, so not NCA, not NCB, but you're getting into some of the industrial, that, that it would make sense that a wide buffer. And the only reason I think it's even worth the time to do something like that is because, because of perceptions of how we support development in the city. I think would indicate that it is a good advice to be able, for any prospective developer, to be able to say, cool, I'm gonna cut six feet off the edge of this and know that before I spend any time trying to engineer the site or get blueprints, I know that I've reduced the amount of workable space to be in compliance with the buffer. And that's the only reason that it would even be worth it, in my mind.
We, we did add last time that little blurb at the end of 11 for required buffers. So, I think this starts to hint at where you're going. So, when required, so essentially, the reason that a buffer is being installed is either the ordinance has specified that one is required, or, you know, I guess someone's doing it out of the goodness of their heart. Usually they're coming here because it's required, I would say. So when required, a buffer must follow the requirements for a wide buffer and adhere to buffer design requirements in this section.
Then don't do anything else, that's fantastic.
Is that, that's okay. Yeah, I think we had talked about not wanting it to be allowed that you just put a fence in, or that it's very narrow, but they have to allocate the six-feet space. Okay, so, all right, so we, we may have hit that one already. Hopefully, we'll, we'll live with that for a while and see how it works.
Let's see how it works. Josh?
I just, two little things. One was, when we talked about the high-quality materials, still, there's a little metal in there, with vinyls now in there. Can, can we just maybe change that to such as, as opposed to like, maybe, like, because I'm reading that as wood, solid vinyl, concrete, base, or stone, those are my five choices.
Where, where are you?
Uh, at number five under buffer design.
On page nine.
For page nine, sorry for that.
Sorry, so what's your question?
Well, I was just, I had mentioned metals specifically, and it's not in there.
So for a buffer, it would have to be a solid, like, sheet metal fence?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, but do you really want a sheet metal fence?
Well, no, I'm, I'm thinking about, again, like, if you're patterning, patterning certain things, and again, like, so if you use, what, what is that method called when you, when you do the cutouts? Like, my concern, again, is that, is that you can't, there's times in which you will want to be able to see into spaces, and if you cannot...
Uh, I think for, I couldn't agree with you more, but this is not for those types of fencing, and the whole point behind this whole section is to ensure that you cannot see in, because the use on the other side is one of which you do not want visible to the other neighbors and, and the property. So, in terms of like, because I think part of this came up with the downtown spot, with the Trinity.
Right.
Right? And that, that would never require a buffer. There's like privacy screenings, and then there's a buffer, and this is a, I can't tell that you're mining on the other side of my property because I can't see it.
Right, but it, it's for any, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's for any industrial use against, against NCA, NCB, or OR. Am I correct on that?
I'm sorry, I'd have to pull up the ordinance to figure out what's required.
Development review requires any time you have a non-residential use next to, I think it's residential, any, from one type of commercial use to a residential use, to screen services, storage areas. So it's not necessarily driven by the zoning district, it's driven by the use.
Okay.
To Shannon's point, the idea is to mitigate any visual impact. You don't want to be able to see in that type of thing. I, I think Trinity is a good example of, they want to be a buffer there because it's already a non-residential use next to...
Non-residential.
But they very well wa, very well may want privacy just so people aren't getting into the dumpster or, I don't know, security purposes or something like that. So then they could have a, an open metal fence or something if they were...
A more decorative fence as opposed to a...
I got you, I got you.
So, the substation on Middle Street, behind the PEX building, that is a metal fence that you can see through, but you can't see at it when, at an angle, and they, we, when we went through that process, staff advocated like, hey, nobody wants to see a substation. They didn't have to buffer it, but we were like, nobody wants to see a sub, they were totally the opposite to, to your point, Josh, they're like...
They were like, people need to be able to see it, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. So they want it for security purposes but not necessary visual impact, so the compromise at that time was to come up with this very, almost like this honeycomb-type thing where if you look at it at an angle, you can't see in there, but if you're looking straight in, you can see in there. And a buffer wasn't necessary, that was more privacy and secure.
And so that, that, it just leads, leads me to think about specifically my neighborhood, right? But NCB, because we have a lot of industrial use within the urban enterprise zone. And, for instance, on Spring Street, one side is urban enterprise, the other side is residential, and we have like, like an auto graveyard in front of, like, the auto body shop there. So like, I can understand why we want a privacy fence there, right? But then, I think there were other, like, industrial uses that, like, so this would, it would be triggered by development review. Development review would say, you need the buffer. Got you, okay, fine.
And in, and in your case too, Josh, or, or your example, like, those familiar with the, the Spring Street, Summer Street neighborhood, like, there's a lot of, I wouldn't say non-conforming uses, but they're already established uses. But if we had residential across the street from a commercial zoning district, then they would have to take into consideration some buffers along the street as well, because you have that residential zone across the street from you at that point. Obviously, you're gonna be able to see into it because there's a driveway, there's a walkway, that type of thing, but what can you do to lessen the impact at that point?
Right, and in a case like that, all those lots are very small, and so it creates a situation where you don't necessarily, you can't necessarily afford a six-foot buffer.
Right, exactly. And we wouldn't require them to do it because they're already there, but if there was like a vacant lot in that neighborhood and they wanted to develop it, then we'd be saying, great, you're gonna have to somehow provide that buffer for the adjacent properties across the street because that's residential as well.
Okay, so I'll, I guess I'll drop the metal thing, but... Really?
Okay.
I think, to Shannon's point, I wonder if we're just dealing with sort of an order thing of having required buffers be all the way at the end? Like, just trying to think about it in terms of, like, okay, I'm in the section about buffers, where buffers need to be, what they should look like, and then you get into what type, and then, oh, by the way, in this, in this scenario, go back up and look at what type. And I wonder if we just moved required buffers to like, the top of section C, if that would make more sense.
Right under purpose, maybe. Here's the purpose of buffers. Oh, they're required, go ahead and read the design info.
Yeah, 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 so like, yeah, just something that sort of says like, okay, so you think you might need a buffer, well, guess what, you know, if it's not required, then read, and if it is required, skip to section C, you're gonna need a six-foot buffer, like, you know, this is what you need to do. Rather than it being sort of a footnote at the end.
Right, sure.
And then, I think the same goes for the question around, or the, you know, sort of getting to Josh's point about, you know, we added in, materials shall be chosen to complement the natural surrounding and built environment. I think that needs to maybe sit at the, sort of, front end of fences and walls, perhaps? You know, like, walls and fences should be finished with durable and high-quality materials with da-da-da-da-da, stone. These materials should be chosen to complement the natural surrounding and built environment. Walls and fences should be six to eight feet high and opaque between incompatible uses. So like, moving the, mention about, about material to be next to the material.
Well, I mean, the numbers, one, two... Well, I mean, the numbers one, two, three, and four are by definition matching the built environment because they're using natural, literally earth and trees.
Yeah, they're matching the natural environment.
So I mean, that language is really specific to fences and walls and I don't know that I want to move fences and walls to the first one.
Ah, no. So moving materials, just that last sentence.
To the front of number five?
Not to the front, or like to the second sentence in number five. So we talk about walls and fences should be these materials and then that's.
Okay.
So after stone.
So you're saying you would like it, that number five to read, fences and walls, colon, walls and fences should be finished with durable and high-quality material, colon, wood, comma, solid vinyl, comma, concrete, masonry, and, or stone. Next sentence, materials shall be chosen to complement the nature, natural surrounding and, uh, built environment. Walls and fences should be eight to, uh, six to eight feet high and opaque between compatible uses. That's, that's what you're saying.
That's what I'm going for.
Okay.
Got it.
So.
So if we made a motion tonight, we could motion it as amended as read and you just captured what Lucy said.
Right.
Yeah. And I, I'll just repeat what I've captured for edits. So moving that last sentence on number five to be the second sentence, um, taking the required buffers at the bottom of page 11 and moving it up to the top of page nine under the purpose before buffer locations.
Yep.
And then numbering the diagrams, wide buffer with earth and berm as, um, maybe parentheses after it that says, uh, correlates to number three or something like that. And then the wide buffer with six-foot high wall and the narrow buffer with six-foot high fence diagrams to correlate with number five.
Yep.
I think that, that pretty much, um, you know, corresponds to what we've been saying. Absolutely. Any other questions, comments, or Michael?
I was just gonna come back to the numbering and the diagrams. I think it has a lot more to do with the artistical renderings are difficult. Uh, there's not much, uh, variety here. And, um, looking at the fences side on, um, it's almost like, where are the fences? In the diagrams. That, that's the hard part that I had with the diagrams.
Yeah, they're kind of overtaken by the trees.
Overtaken by the trees and it just, uh, not a whole lot of artistical aspect to it.
You draw, shall we?
Uh.
Kidding.
A bit, but I don't know if we want to redo these diagrams.
No, I'm not suggesting that. At least not at this time. Maybe at some future time.
Maybe in the future. Okay. All right. Uh, any further discussion? Then I'll entertain a motion.
I'm happy to make one.
Absolutely.
I'd like to make a motion pursuant to Article 13, Section 6 of the Zoning and Land Use Code to amend the Design Lewiston Site Plan Review and Design Guidelines Standards to citywide design guidelines as captured tonight by staff.
Do I have a second?
I would second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Joshua Nagin?
Yes.
Michael Marcott?
Yes.
Shannon Cox?
Yes.
Christine Kittredge?
Yes.
Amy Smith?
Yes.
Lucy Bissin, yes. All right, so.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. The planning board discussing content for developing a letter to the council on process and possible changes. If you will allow me, I, I would like to plug in my laptop so that I can type it up as we go, refine it, and have it ready to send email when, by the time we leave tonight. How's that?
That's audacious, but I support your goal.
Well, try anyway. If it doesn't, if, you know, I mean, we can give it a.
No, shoot for the sun.
Give it the old college try.
Can we use a monocam?
I, there's a, there's an outlet there, but not for the, uh, not that one. It's gotta be the HDMI.
This, this doesn't?
Doesn't have an HDMI. Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, we're gonna take a, that, that's electrical.
What kind of outlet do you need?
I, I wanna project it to the screen so that everybody can see what, what we're doing.
Gotcha.
Instead of just.
I thought you meant plug it in, plug it in.
Well, I probably.
I was like, there's outlets.
I know, that's what I was like.
Are we taking recess? Is that what we're?
Yes, Amy asked for five minutes. Well, that's quite all right. Oh, the HDMI will work for sure. Oops. Do it at home. Because I have a second screen at home.
We scribe, or neither does the council.
As I sit at this.
We think about the executive session. There are certain things I can before, but we don't take minutes in the executive session.
Do you?
The Roberts Rule says no minutes. I mean.
See at the top it says, those bodies or agencies following within this subchapter, but then I don't like see it really call that. Like the body is that. They have the reasons that, but not the bodies that.
No, it's not prohibited. Okay.
Yeah, be careful.
Oh, yeah. No, I have nothing, uh, uh, I have nothing open in here that.
An historical, it's been a place's way nasty with each other.
So we're just gonna start with. Okay. So, uh, I sent you all and if anybody wants a hard copy of, of what I, what I rambled on, I have it. So let's see here. Hold on, I'm gonna make this even bigger. Okay. So, two, are we sending it to all of these people?
Looks like proper protocol.
So I feel like it's gonna depend on what the content of the letter is. And so, um, maybe we start with a discussion about your letter.
Absolutely. No, no, I, I, this is a very rough draft and, and as I said, I, you know, you want to get rid of something, great. I mean, I put I, it should be we.
Yep. And, and so fundamentally, your letter gets at two things. And they might be two different letters, they might be two different pieces, and they might, both might need to be written. But what I'm observing is, one is if, it feels like, and I use that language intentionally, it feels like this body has expressed frustration and displeasure with the way in which members of, or the city council as a whole, has categorized our work, our stance for or against development. And there is a desire, and I, and then I'll shift and speak to like my own perspective. I think there's a desire to set the record straight, that we are, once delivering and I guess agreeing to the right language, but we are a, a planning board that is caring for the long-term development of the city, that we would like to see development and growth, and that we've expressed that in many different ways on individual issues, as well as the ways in which we've proactively been reconsidering commercial business thoroughfares. Um, we tackled the, uh, adult drinking establishments rules to be more appro, like there's a number of ways and which is, so I think there's one around, and I will personally say, there is a desire for a public record to be made with a shared voice from this planning board that counters the anti-development narrative that has escaped. Right? And I think that is, as stewards of this city's reputation and its future and the ability for us to achieve our collective goals of seeing development, good development in Lewiston. And so that is one thing. And that in and of itself is a letter that, that some of this content really hearkens to that desire. Um, and then there is a second piece that might be addressed in the same letter or might require a separate avenue, which is to say, there are structural flaws in the way in which the city council and the planning board relate to each other and that those structural flaws hinder our ability to have the information we need to support the development plans that city council have set forward and that we would like to find ways to address the structural flaws that, that create a disconnect in the relationship between the two. And I'm just checking if others are feeling that way. Like there's two things that are swirling in the air and I don't know that they can be addressed in one shot, particularly not if we're not clarifying that they are two separate issues. Related, but separate issues.
We can start, you know, I mean, I'll open up a new, a new document and we can start from scratch. I mean, it's whatever you guys want to do.
I, I would propose, because I think, I agree with you, that there are two separate issues at hand here. There's, and maybe even it's more than two, but we can sort of put it into like, like two buckets of like, there's the feelings bucket, right? Reputation bucket, um, integrity bucket. Then there's the bucket of, well, what do we do to like, make sure that we have good process, right? Like just like what you were saying. One thing that I, I would encourage us as a group to do is if we are gonna acknowledge frustration amongst this, this board, that we can also acknowledge the frustration that we've seen from the council in terms of things that have been said publicly, right? Um, and that's not necessarily saying that you have to agree with it, but to acknowledge that, no, we, we have heard you, right? We've heard you, we got it, right? You know, we're, we're not, we're not ignoring you here. Because I think what we need to do, you know, to, to work together successfully, you have to have trust, right? And it seems like right now there just isn't trust. There's just no trust, right? And I would make the argument that a good way to build trust, at least, you know, for me and my personality, and I think for many people, is to show good actions, to show good actions that can, you know, say like, okay, look, we're, we're trying, we're trying. And I'm, and that's not to say that we weren't.
We're trying, they're not. They kept us out of the loop in this, in this whole episode. And, and we, you know, Mr. Jeffers, and I've known Mr. Jeffers for 20-plus years. So, uh, you know, he was constrained on what he could say because of the executive, uh, the executive session. We asked repeatedly during that, the meeting to Mr. Jeffers, if Mr. Gendron had a plan. They, we were told there was no plan, that Mr., that a developer had to own the property before he would make a plan. Then, last week, in the, uh, city council meeting, they voted to talk about what had been said in executive session. And I was, there was eight people on the dais and I swear there was eight different stories of what blazes that was said. And, and, you know, it, at one point there was, oh, he was going to be building, uh, a, a mixed development. And then two people later, it was a senior with mixed development.
Yeah.
And then it was something else. And it was, they, you know, there would, there was no consensus.
I hear you there. And I hear you there. And I think part of building the trust that I'm talking about is talking about that in a frank manner, not necessarily calling them out and saying like, this is, as, you know, it may be outrageous, but just simply stating the fact that we were trying to make a decision based on the information we had. And to make good decisions, we have to have good information, right? So talking about it in that context of like, we want to build trust, here's how we see a pathway for trust, not necessarily just for us, but for them, and making it as a part of our record, as our letter, as something that we are putting forth.
I agree in, in that respect. But also in last week's plan, uh, city council, when the rezoning of Lisbon Street came up, and they were, uh, given two proposals. The proposal which kept, uh, which is what we voted on, that kept Martell School 860, uh, Lisbon Street as OR, or what the staff had said that, uh, 860 should be CB. And we were, um, said that we were amateurs and we should, we had no business changing what staff's recommendation was.
And what I hear in that is a lot of maybe hurt and frustration from whoever might have said that. I didn't actually watch the council meeting.
It's interesting, yeah.
Some, some hurt and frustration from that person and perhaps it was misplaced in those comments and that there was frustration about the project not moving forward and this was just yet another thing that was seen as a roadblock to it.
Again, we're, we're disrespected and we're treated as idiots. And I have to tell you, and, and it's partly in the letter, but I mean, it doesn't have to be in the letter we sent. I've been on the planning board three times in the last 20 years. I was on the Board of Appeals before. I spent 10 years on the Transportation Committee. Mr. Marcott has been at least twice on the planning board with me during those 20 years. He has been on the Finance Committee, uh, I'm, I'm not sure, s, a, a number of, of terms. He has been a city counselor. And, you know, and, and so we are amateurs, but we're not, uh, we are educated or informed amateurs. Uh, it, it's, we're, we're treated like, anyways. Fine. Josh had his hand up first, so I'll let him speak.
I was just quickly gonna ask, there's, there's, I think there's two things that we need to get to. And one is that, um, the finding of fact that, we, we have an issue with, with, with staff being constrained by executive session because they're not able to, to, to guide the boards, uh, in a way that's, that's, that's practical. So, you know, that, that's one issue. Um, and, and the finding of fact seems to vary depending on who you're talking to. And because of the fact that there is no note-taking in executive session, um, and there's no information passed on from that, from that section, there's no way that we can actually perform our fiduciary responsibility when development project have, projects have been discussed in executive session. There's no way for staff to direct us, um, or provide us with the proper information in order.
Because they're constrained by.
Right. And so, and so that, that, that's, that's a functioning issue. And I think it comes down to, and I have to name it, um, the, there's dysfunction on the council. They, they, they do not get along. They, they don't work together. And so the, the question is like, how much of the information that the council has, does all of the council have? Never mind like what gets passed on to us, because what we get is give a disposition on something with no, with no background information. And so if there's a structural way to fix that, like if we can have a finding of fact presented to us that, that the, the staff and council agree upon in order for us to decide what to do with the property, that's helpful. Um, but right now, just guessing whether or not it was discussed in executive session and what the factors are out there, it's, it's not possible. It's just not. So, you know.
Shannon? Well, so even in by your own recount, I also haven't watched the whole thing and I'm sorry. Um, but even by your own recount, there was eight different versions.
Well, maybe not eight, but there was.
Okay, let's say there was four.
At least four.
So I guess here's my point is, um, I get concerned, I get concerned every time any group says they to, to and about another group. And I think, um, something that really stands out to me is I don't think there is a version of they. And I, I, I think if we want to talk about, um, the way in which we. the way in which we wish that all members of city council and the city council as a body, and recognize that that's two different things, right? That, that they would partner with the individuals and the collective of the planning board to work through developments that are good proactive and good development for the city. Like, I think we should say that that's what we want, that we want to build trust that allows us to do that, and that it is not surprising that with two groups of people are given different information and asked to arrive at the same result, they don't. And that's going to matter with Island Point, that's going to matter with a number of other things that are on our like proactive, you know, development agenda. And so, I think if what we want is a trusting relationship and to, you know, get the message out that this is a city that welcomes development, and that the city council and planning board should work together, then we should say that's the end result that we desire, and we should say that expressly. Um, and I think part of what, I'm just going to be really candid, I'm gonna have a really hard time penning or signing to a letter if there is, I, I think the, the worst thing that we can do is to prove that we are amateurs by engaging in some tit-for-tat, low, low-class conversation that is with this board, engaging with one or two prominent voices. And I think when, if I am a developer in Southern Maine saying I'm ready to expand, I see the opportunity in the Lewiston Auburn region, and there is letter writing and na- at this moment, that is a one-sided narrative, and it is not a predominant narrative for all of city council. And the worst thing we could do is respond in kind, or to couch that the whole city council is of like mind, when we have seen it time and time again that they're not, right? And so, I just get concerned about that the, I think there's an opportunity for us to rise above. I think if we want to put out a message that we are pro-development, we could list all of the ways in which we have supported and taken actions as planning board to P pro-development. We could make that a love letter to the local media, we could make it a love letter to the residents, or we could direct a letter to the city council. But my, if our desire is to say, here is the truth about what we want, here is the truth about what we endeavor, and there is an open invitation for partnership, I think that is a higher road. And I think more importantly, it's what a stabilizing force for the future of Lewiston needs.
Yeah, I was just venting on mine.
Well, and it read that way, and it feels good, and I'm not saying it's bad.
I, I'm, I'm, you know, I have done this before and, and passed the letter on to people, and they go, you don't do that. And, and, and I've rewritten the letter, and, and that's, and that's perfectly fine. And like I said, it went to us. It didn't go to anybody else, it didn't go to them, they didn't see it. And, you know, I mean, it hasn't gone outside of our group. And, and that's why I meant it to, to stay. And if somebody wants to dictate, I will happily type, and we can get a positive, some type of positive letter. Michael.
When I saw the, uh, the rough draft this afternoon, I learned some facts, but not, uh, from not watching council meetings, or, uh, reading Lewiston Sun Journal articles and, uh, editorials and, uh, so on. And I learned something here that, uh, I was probably living a week-long, uh, state of bliss, uh, until I saw it. When, uh, when the planning board was referred to as just amateurs. Uh, I think the chair has very well said that, uh, few of us and, uh, and of course, uh, other people have other backgrounds outside the planning board, uh, that lend to the planning board. We're not amateurs, none of us here are. Now, we wouldn't have been nominated, appointed, and gone through, um, the city council now these past two years for the appointment. There are issues and decisions that have been made in the past, uh, with regards to, uh, the comp plan, with regards to what we want to see in Lewiston. We are the keepers of the comp plan, uh, and we have an agenda. That agenda may not always coincide with a current majority of a city council. That's unfortunate. There should be compromise. When we get to a crossroads, uh, we should be able to reach across the aisle and, uh, come up with something that everybody can be happy with. I think I did that when I was on the city council. Interestingly enough, this particular issue was one of those issues. When it came to the council, I, uh, that, just to get rid of the property, I wanted to see certain things in the RFP. They were in the RFP, and the most responsive bidder got the option. Option expired, for whatever reasons, uh, things started to change. We weren't given all of the information as to what was going on in executive session, but they're counting on us, by rule, charter, uh, ordinance, uh, that says that we, uh, decide on disposition. Well, we did our responsibility, and we more than telegraphed what we wanted, uh, out of this property. And we, now, we did it again when it came to, uh, rezoning, which was right on the heels, uh, of the disposition, which is rather interesting. When you take a really good look at, uh, the timeline on things, you have to wonder whether, uh, there was a hidden agenda somewhere. Uh, we understand that you rezone something, it's a matter of right. We're not stopping, uh, a project of any caliber on that site. We want to have a little bit more say in what goes on that site. We've worked for years to increase, uh, our, uh, offerings, uh, of, uh, senior housing. It, it hasn't really progressed, uh, very well, as Dave knows. Uh, my council turned down, uh, a particular housing project. Uh, I think it was the previous council when I was on the planning board. Uh, we, we both struggled with it, the planning board and then at the council, and that project was turned down. Then this one comes around, and I'm thinking, okay, there's a few things I'm looking for. I'm gonna reach out across the aisle, see if I can get these in the RFP, uh, and, uh, and, and we'll get the, the senior housing, uh, that's, uh, sorely needed. Then other courses of events, uh, take place, and, uh, and, and then we're here in this situation, um, and, and right on the heels of it, community business. Really? Uh, again, we weren't privy, and this is not the first time we've asked, uh, to, uh, be cognizant of, uh, what's, uh, being said in executive session. Uh, there are, uh, opportunities, uh, or, uh, for lack of a better word, opportunities, uh, for the, both boards to meet together, uh, even if it is simply to be brought, uh, up to speed on what's been said. We don't necessarily have to be in the executive committee that's negotiating. Uh, but that's the other thing. Uh, a different agenda was being negotiated than what we even understood. And we were not allowed to understand right down to the wire when we made, uh, the vote. Had we been part of those discussions, uh, like Lucy's letter, I think, says, at one point, it probably would have been a different outcome.
I'm sure there would have been.
Yeah.
I'm sure there would have been.
Because then, everybody would have understood what, uh, uh, what the goals, the aims, the agendas were. And we could, we, we could have gotten something that everybody was happy with. I mean, uh, and I missed my opportunity at, uh, a previous meeting or meetings, uh, but this was never about Mr. Gendron. Uh, that's, uh, th- this was about what the planning board was looking for. And sometimes, my agenda doesn't match the other members. But I saw an opportunity here where maybe we can all get what we want. And, uh, it created a lot of, uh, conflict, obviously, and name-calling. I think we, uh, anything, whether it's a letter, or an op-ed, or, uh, anything else, uh, we need to take the high road, because I think the council has decided to take the low road. And, uh, a- a- and, and coming back to, this was never about Mr. Gendron. If I got what I was looking for, I'd sell it to him for a dollar. We've done that with developers in the past. And so it was never about him, it was about the things that we want to see in this community, and that we've been struggling with for years. How old is that comp plan, uh, today, Dave?
Two thousand seventeen.
Seventeen, so that's six, uh, nearly six years old. And, um, soon, how, how, uh, many years are supposed to go by before you revisit it again?
Twelve.
Uh, start looking at it in ten years, the state consistency is good for twelve.
For twelve, okay. Uh, so, uh, we're already beyond the half-mile waypoint. I, I think, uh, the council and all of its independent members, uh, needs to understand that we're all from this community. Some of us, uh, have lived in this community our entire lives, and we want to see things move forward, we want to see progress, positive, and, uh, ha- and have the impact, benefit the community for years on out, not to have a negative repercussion, simply for a quick turnaround. Thank you.
So, uh, just to propose that we can start sort of typing out some thoughts here, sort of along the lines of what Shannon was saying, and what I'm thinking, I wonder if it would make sense, let's, let's start with maybe talking about our, like, our guiding principle, right? Like, I'm sure we have like a purpose statement someplace that we can include in this letter. Like, what, you know, the planning board exists to do X, Y, and Z.
Uh, Lucy, on the, the copy that I sent you, I think, uh, if you look at the, the last, uh, the highlight, the highlighted portion, that's pulled directly from our website.
There we go, perfect. So I think starting with that, starting with like, here's what the planning board is here for. This is, this is what we're aiming to do. I think that's a really good place to start.
So.
I think, yeah, let's just copy and paste that in there.
I don't know if that's our purpose as much as our duties. It's not very inspiring, gang.
That's the duties, but the purpose is below that, uh, that I had written out.
Yeah, so we might need to wordsmith this one a little bit.
I think so, so, um, the planning board, hold on, here we go. We are here to assist both, if you page down.
Sorry.
We are here to assist both staff and leadership in accomplishing what we believe is one of our shared goals, managing the actions relevant to the current and future needs of the city of Lewiston. Right at the bottom. Uh, as they relate to land use, planning, and code, holding community and economic development goals as the guiding star within the framework of the comprehensive plan and our shared planning sessions. We wish to be a trusted partner in this work, not to act as a perfunctory board or scapegoat. I guess you could probably remove the perfunctory board or scapegoat.
Probably could, probably could.
But, yeah, so basically, I, I think that's, that's kind of close to what we do. Um, and maybe we wordsmith that a bit, but.
Yeah, let's, let's put that in there.
Yeah.
All right, so, let's see.
Yeah, I would replace that.
Okay, so, let's move this and replace this.
Textile foreclosure does not need to be in our opening.
Okay.
Nice and inspiring.
So, we're here to assist both staff and leadership in accomplishing what we believe is one of our shared goals, managing the actions relevant to the current and future needs of the city of Lewiston as they relate to land use and planning and code, period. We're getting into a run-in sentence, guys. Yeah, well.
Yeah, you do.
Sentence marathon.
Yeah. Holding community and economic development goals as the guiding star within the framework of the comprehensive plan and our shared planning sessions is not a complete sentence.
No.
Yeah.
Because you threw a period in.
Okay, well, we'll remove, code, comma, all right. Holding community and economic development as the guiding star within the framework of the comprehensive plan and our shared planning goals. We would, we wish to be a, we wish, in this work.
The endeavor.
Yeah, I, I don't.
To be a trusted partner in this work. Like, we are taking actions to be a trusted partner in this work. I also wonder, and this, uh, I don't know if this is blending the two buckets or not, and I'm totally open to that feedback, but I wonder.
That's not correct. How do you spell endeavor?
There you go.
Ah, there we go.
Right-click again. I just rely on spell-check, girl.
Yeah, I think it's OR.
There you go.
D E A, B O R, okay. D E A V O, okay. Uh, please go ahead and chat.
Uh, I just, I wonder if, um, I wonder if the opportunity in the opening, first sentence, last sentence of the first paragraph, I don't really, whatever, but, um, is, we believe in the city and its potential, and we believe.
I, I don't type shortening.
You want?
Uh, we believe.
Uh, we believe in the city and its potential.
I'll, I'll correct this.
It's okay.
Yep.
And recognize. I don't know if I can speak at that pace and make sense, I'm just gonna be really honest. No, it's okay, we have a recording, right? There's a recording? We're gonna rely on the recording here.
Well, we can watch, uh, we can.
We can write the letter from the recording.
We can watch this, the, the.
Yeah. I'll never make it.
Yes, that's, okay, yeah, and recognize.
Yeah, so, uh, I'm gonna go for it, and then we can recap.
Okay.
Okay, we believe in the city and its potential, and recognize that partnering with private development is one of the required ways to reach that potential. To do so, the planning board and the city council must work in partnership. Alex can type that fast, is that what he's offering?
I may be able to type that fast.
Yeah. But, like, that direction, maybe, about where we're going, does that make sense? This is what we want, because I think, for me, the thing this letter can do is say, we are, we are pro-development. We believe in the comprehensive plan and the vision it lays out for the city. We believe that we can get there through public-private partnerships and private development, and we recognize that working with developers, private businesses, and residents, as well as the city council, is how we're going to do that. To see the comprehensive plan, our shared vision, the Riverfront Island Master Plan vision achieved, we must work in tandem and in trust.
You know, also to, yeah, there's also like, I would also name a couple of the elephants in the room as far as their infrastructure are concerned, like, uh, I guess like legacy, uh, like Bates Mill number five. That comes to mind, right?
The third rail that nobody commented on.
Uh, but Bates Mill come, number five comes to mind, um, some of the, some of the older mill infrastructure that, that's dying out comes to mind. Pine Land comes to mind.
Are you hoping to say that in this letter?
Uh, but I'm just talking about like blighted, like, there, there's, there's, that, what, what is that, the, the, what is it? An old, like, uh, it's either a florist or a, uh, or, or a laundry service that's over by, uh, St. Mary's, that's like two blocks.
It's a dry cleaner.
Yes.
It's right around the corner from my house, I don't know what you're talking about.
Yeah, it's like, so what happened?
Was it Beals? I thought it was Beals, something or other.
No, blank.
Yeah.
Look blank.
But there are just structures that remain within the city that, 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 you know, obviously are like.
But is, so I think that's the next stage, right? This is to say, we want to have those conversations. We want to be in conversation about what's holding us back, we want to be in conversation about what we're inviting, and that we, to do that, we need to share information and grow trust.
Okay.
Sorry, buddy, how you doing? Welcome to the chair.
I'm doing okay.
Yep.
No, no, this is all good, I was just acclimating myself to the computer.
That's fair.
So, we believe in the city and its potential, and recognize that partnering with private development staff and the city council is the way to achieve this future.
Yes.
I condensed a couple of sentences.
Can, can I throw something in there right now? Just, just, just as part of that?
Um, where, where do, what do you want?
Well, it's, I, I would word it, um, just as an add-on. This body has not denied nor added further restrictions to any project brought before us in current, in recent memory, and in many cases, removed restrictions on proposed development projects while keeping.
Sounds like a copy and paste that you could send someone, huh?
Yep.
If you could copy and paste.
I just want to read it, so you all agree with it. Within the spirit of the comprehensive plan, the design district overlay, and the needs of the neighborhoods the projects are proposed for.
Is that part of your letter?
Is that a run-on, Lucy?
It is.
Yeah, so it's, uh.
I'll just send it.
What page?
No, it's.
I got it here.
Did I not see this letter? What are the rules about communicating with each other? Because I would have liked to have seen this letter.
No, he just sent it to me.
She was gonna print it.
Gotcha.
Okay, so where, what paragraph is that in?
Uh, there would be the third paragraph.
Third paragraph?
Um, just start at.
Sentence what?
We as a body, so it's second, second.
Oh, here we go, here we go. The planning board is, we as a body, yeah.
Thank you for acknowledging that maybe the first sentence wasn't.
So I'm gonna just copy and paste that over. We'll find a home for it later.
Great.
It's just gonna go in here.
Love it.
We're not going to do it.
Necessary.
I would like the importance of working in tandem and trust to come up somewhere.
Yes.
Right? I actually think it's imperative, and we, we want to, right? Like, it is both necessary and we desire. Uh, can you replace the period with a comma at the end of trust? Sorry, Lucy, it won't be running, running.
No, no, that's fine.
I do like myself a long sentence too.
No, no.
It's imperative and we desire to, it is imperative, and we desire to work in tandem and trust to proactively invite development that helps realize the city's potential.
Realizes the city's potential.
Yeah. I just think it's important that we're saying why, what, how, to what end are we working in tandem and trust? Like, there's a purpose behind it, you know what I mean?
Any other sentences for me that you want to throw in here?
Not yet.
One thing that I would like to have in here, I don't know if other folks agree, is that we acknowledge that like, the Martell School had, this, this property has been frustrating.
Sorry, hang on. Gentlemen, I've had such a hard time hearing when you guys have a side conversation, and I'm afraid I'm missing golden nuggets that are important to the conversation we're having.
Yeah.
So can I invite you to chime in with your, your wonderful thoughts, and we will happily pause to make space for it? Pull up the microphone, make it a collaboration.
Do we have a planning board paddle for, no?
Nope, but I should.
Okay, okay.
It's like I do.
No, I won't use that. So, sorry, it's getting late here, sorry, city staff. I hope this is entertaining. So I think it would be important to, you know, we recognize that the, the issues surrounding the Martell School have been frustrating, for, I think, for all parties.
So just saying, and I, and I don't want to qualify with that, only because, weren't there issues prior to the Martell School?
Oh, heck yeah.
There was, and, and I mean, like, I, I get that there's like a legacy, but there, I cannot remember what it was, but, oh.
Sorry, five Park Street?
Oh, and Charles. Charles and Pettingill.
Right.
So I, I actually think it is damaging to qualify it.
Okay.
We have seen as of late, in the past year, a number of developments, right? Like, I just think it is a pattern of behavior and not a Martell issue.
You've been here longer here, here longer than me.
And that's just the like, recent.
They're not developments, they're, they're proposed developments, right? Because nothing has ever actually.
They're not even a proposed development.
No, they're not even proposed.
Yeah, it's, nothing's crystallized to the point where like, we can say yes.
Right. I, you know, just as an observation, while, while Alex gets caught up with his typing fingers, which are fast.
Or potential for development.
No, yes, or no, the pattern is a desire to see this board proactively rezone based on a concept that has not been shared related to a development that hasn't been proposed. That's the pattern.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If I was to actually draw, right, like, Charles Street would be really great if we rezoned it, because then it would invite a particular development that could or could not be something specific that we might or might not be able to refer to.
Right.
Repeat with Martell. What was the third one? Park? Park was the same thing.
Yep.
Yeah. I just think it's helpful to address the root cause when you are able to know what the issue is.
Right, well, and to me, it's like, we cannot in good faith make decisions without the information.
Without the informa, with all.
Well, I mean, I, I hear people show up to city council as well as to the planning board, but when you have fourteen people saying, if you do that, we could have a movie theater or a hotel in our backyard, you can't. And we can't look at them and say, no, you're gonna have senior housing for fifty-five and up in your backyard. We've got it on good rumor.
Right.
Right, like, we don't have any, and we're stuck looking at, at people who have genuine concerns, and realistically, the ask of us, could they or could they not develop it in such a way that it could be a hotel? Yes, ma'am, they could develop it. Should we approve this zone?
So I think, I think we're then booping.
And, and that's, that's why, at the city council meeting, one of the counselors brought up, why can't we put restrictions on the deed? And, you know, specifically back to eight six, to Martell School property. And they were told by Mr. Hediger that yes, you can put restrictions of covenants on, on the deed, but that runs with the property, so if nothing happens on the property, and, you know, somebody else doesn't want those covenants, then it's a hassle to get it changed. It's a lot easier to leave it O R and do a conditional zoning. I mean, you've got up the street where Shaw's was O R, and there is.
Half of it still is, as I recall, the back half.
You know, and, no, the whole thing is, is C B, but it's too, it, it was split, and there was like N C A or N C B in the back, and the front was O R, and, but the whole property now is C B with a conditional zone. So, and we've, whenever we've had anyone come to do a conditional zone, I mean, how many times have we said no?
You guys say yes like ninety-five percent of the time.
Right, like ninety-eight percent of the time.
No, because typically, nothing is gonna come to us that's going to be an automatic no anyways.
When it comes to development review, if we've done our job.
Right.
You guys should be saying yes.
Right.
Right, it's like tonight.
And, and what you guys have been doing, certainly over the years, and very aggressively in the last, you know, twelve months, is planning, right? Because the board has been historically doing development review, because that's, we're busy doing that. And, and we didn't have the staff upstairs to get planning done.
Yeah.
You did plan when you did the comprehensive plan. You're doing planning now with all of these amendments. These amendments are just recommendations, and I say just lightly, because you guys know what's going on, because you approve the projects later on. But at the end of the day, the council, they just act upon your recommendation at that point. But otherwise, you folks are, because if you were denying things, if you weren't business friendly, then there'd be a problem.
Right.
We would probably, Shelley would be telling you, why are you not approving this? They meant one through twenty.
Yeah.
Right.
We have that discussion occasionally where it's like, just because you don't like it, doesn't mean you can't approve it.
Right.
You could follow it up with a motion to say, let's amend the ordinance, because I never want to see elderly housing on this corner again, or something. But as long as the ordinance says it, you're the, you're the checks and balances to make sure that everyone is meeting the requirements. The buffer discussion you folks just talked about, you know, so, you're not, for my, granted, maybe I'm biased, because I work with you folks, but I don't know that you're not user-friendly.
Maybe you're just informed, because you work with us folks.
Right, can we take paragraph two and put it after paragraph as of late? I think if we start reading it, it, I think that paragraph, we need a capital, capital.
We're gonna work on that later.
Yeah, grammar and spell check at the end.
Yes.
I, I would also like to read a pre-written statement.
If you got a pre-written thing, tell me where it is.
Well, I just want, I just want to read it.
Okay.
So, this board has repeatedly requested further information on how planning, on how the planning board and economic development department currently targets, excuse me, yeah, okay, that's awkward. This board has also repeatedly requested further information on how the planning board and economic development department currently tag, targets and incentivizes new development and proposed approaches to encourage and incentivize new construction. Specifically and particularly as it relates to housing, which we all know we have a shortage of in all segments, and particularly those that require partnerships with larger developers. We, this body understands the importance of our duties and takes seriously our responsibilities as vested and invested members of our community. Well, basically, just kind of speaking to the point of like, we understand.
I think if you look at his letter, it's, he's got that in there.
Okay, well, I, I just want to like confirm the, the fact that we're, we know that the piece we're missing is large development, and we're trying to figure out how to make that happen from a planning board position, which, we don't have the power to incentivize.
Okay, so just to re-center us here, my project manager brain finally just kicked in.
Nice, hello.
Sorry, it's Monday. We're not gonna write this document right now. We're, I'm going to write an outline of the document. I'm going to also apologize in advance if I get a little testy with people. Don't take it personally, I'm just trying to get the exact thing, right? From folks, the exact little chunk of information. So, let's outline this letter, make sure that we have our key points, and then we can fill in all of that wonderful grout into our beautiful mosaic later. Sound good?
Yeah.
Okay, so, first point, we believe in this city. Second point, there has been frustration that has led to fractured, fractured trust. Third point, this is what we do. I'm just sort of taking what we've written already and recondensing it. This is what we do, okay. Then, fourth point is, here's our track record. Okay, so now we've hit the track record. I think, right there in my mind, that's our opening paragraph or two or three. That's the opening section. We have set the stage. I think at this point, it would be worthwhile not to go into all of the previous things that have happened. It's good to acknowledge them, but we shouldn't talk about them.
Yeah.
Let's talk about this specific example of the Martell School, and where we see that there are policy and procedural levers that could have improved the outcome, right? Does that sound good to folks? And, and we've identified them. We've identified them in this conversation of, if we know the information that we have to have to make a good decision, we can make that good decision, so on and so forth. So, Martell School as an example. Yeah, I think it's your, your keyboard that makes it hard to type. I'm having, I'm having a little, little, little trouble here too.
Do you want to highlight any of the, any of the key pieces of information that weren't given, or just specify?
I think we're gonna get to that.
Okay.
Um, I'm trying to do all of my, so, we're, we're gonna do all the numbered bullets, and then we're gonna do sub-bullets after that. So, Martell School is an example. That's some meat there. Now, Lucy, you also brought up the, the sort of accusation around zoning, and that we, you know, but that's, that's still tied to the Martell School, right? Are there any other examples that we want to have within the body of this letter? The meat, the torso, you know, we have the head, we need to fill out the torso, perhaps the Martell School is the whole torso, perhaps it's not. Is there anything else that we want in the torso here?
So I don't, I don't know if this is the butt, because underneath the torso?
Sure.
Yeah, you're welcome.
They don't lie, as Shakira says.
So I just, I don't know if it's like the pivot point where we move from the history of what has happened, and then we state the path forward that we see as an alternative, improved path. But I just, it feels like whether it's number six or number eight. Uh, and, and maybe it'll help us figure out how to get from one to the other. I think we can use the joint meeting regarding the Riverfront Island Master Plan that we just had, and the specific early action item of acquiring or land banking, as some of this language really nicely introduces, land banking island point, right? And that, that is, if, if we are acquiring or disposing of properties to the end of having the vision of Riverfront Island Master Plan achieved, then that is going to require an amount of trust and information sharing that is like, the ideal version of how Martell could have gone. And so I just think it is helpful to lay out, this is what happened. We recognize in this, in this, there was frustrations on both sides because X, Y, Z examples, we needed A, B, C information. We see much opportunity coming, coming quickly, on where we will need to improve both our mechanisms and our trust, like the process and the trust, to achieve that which we, we shared a vision about at the Riverfront Island Master Plan workshop, right? So there's like a tangible, forward-facing case study too. Does that make sense?
So it's like, here's what's at stake.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, and what, yeah, exactly, great.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Land baking to get that vision, and we need the ideal vision of, version of communication.
And information sharing.
Communication, hash info, share, okay.
Somewhere in there, you know, we need to get across that when there is a controversial project that requires executive action by the city council because, to protect the buyer, the seller, the whoever.
I don't know, is controversial or confidential?
Confidential, contr, well, it could be controversial.
Well, because I think some of them end up being, yeah, well, I mean, I think some of them end up being controversial, but I think some aren't controversial, but because of bargaining ability and, right, so like.
Whatever word you want to use, okay? Confidential, controversial, that the, the city council needs to realize that the planning board, because we are planning, needs to be included. Not in all of the, these executive sessions that they're discussing this particular project with, but we need to know what is vital, so that we can give them the response that they want. Do they want, you know, if we're, if we're selling property like the Martell, if we had had the, you know, if, if, if Mr. Gendron was actually wanting to put real, elderly ser, senior housing with a retail on the bottom, on that property, which was, if that was exactly what he was going, he was proposing, then we, if, had we known that, we'd have, we'd have sold it to him.
So, Lucy, try this on for size. If the information shared in the executive session is impactful to the decision of city council, we should safely assume that it will impact the planning board's decision to arrive, to arrive at the same conclusion. And that sharing the key takeaways of that information that informed the council's thinking will be imperative to ensuring our thinking's aligned.
Correct, I mean, it's some language to that effect. So that they understand that when they come up with another project, or some other project like this, and, and they feel strongly that this is the way to go, if they want us to agree, to work with them, then we need to have the same information that they have. And then we still might make the, a decision that doesn't agree, but it, we need to have that information.
But it's more likely, because we will have the same info.
Correct.
We will come to the same conclusion, given the same evidence.
Candidly, we got more information in the public comment period.
Right.
And from one party that was not representative of the interests related to the outcome they wanted us to achieve. And there was no information in public comment or in the provided material about, very little, not enough.
Yeah, the, few things that stood out pretty, pretty substantially were the fact that the, the Martell School actually is, it is such a state of disrepair that it actually needs to be taken down as soon as possible, which is something I was not aware of until, until public comments at, at the council meeting.
We've been saying that about other prominent brick buildings in the city for a while.
Yeah, but then, but then.
But the city won't ensure it.
The council has now given them six more, six more weeks.
Right.
So how imperative is it to come, that it has to come down?
Well, I guess that comes back to a, that, that comes back to a finding of fact, right? Because like, we, we've had, we were told that, that the property was going to be taxable, and then apparently on, on the, on the, on the request to, to extend the option, Avesta had gone to the city to ask for it to be non-taxable, which, which was not part of the original plan, and was not shared with us, so we didn't know that information. The senior center, that's another piece that isn't in there. The, the sidewalks, like, all of these pieces.
Can I just have a quick request? I think everyone's sort of picked up on little bits and pieces, because we're not gonna write this letter tonight.
No, we're not.
Can people make a bullet list of what they see as the missteps on the Martell School project, and then we can synthesize those lists later?
Yeah, just.
But it's okay to talk about it now, I'm just saying like.
Yeah, no, I got you.
Please do that, so that we can put it into the outline later.
So what do you, what do you, I mean, we can't be sending this, this via email back and forth.
Staff, could you?
From home, because that's, that's expirate information. So we either do it tonight, or we do it next, next meeting.
Gotcha.
And the longer we wait.
I hear you there.
Or option C, we can request a special meeting, that is, this is the only agenda item, and we all go through it together, right? Like, there's an option C, right?
Yeah, yeah, we can request.
I, I don't think that we're gonna end up with a good quality product tonight. I, I don't think that we're going to end up with a good quality product tonight. And I, and I do think-
That's fine.
Let me gut check this in terms of like, what's legal? Because I'd always like to be on the, yep, you're good side of what's legal.
Well, I do too.
Yeah. If we, if we in this room together share this out with us, can, can one or two of us volunteer to draft, not together, you know, maybe just alternatives? But we could draft some language around this so that there's a starting framework for our discussion, and we have an hour meeting where we pull it up, it's on the screen, everybody gets a chance to read it, and maybe is the thing we send out in the minutes in advance? And then we can finalize it together and sign it?
Yeah.
Is that an option and an approach?
What work are we allowed to do outside of this meeting?
Yeah, we don't see any reason why you couldn't do that. Yeah, if, if someone wants to provide something that we send out in the next packet, you could absolutely do that.
I think part of it, too, is whether you're having a meeting, right? You know, if there's, if there's more than four of you, then it becomes a meeting, you know? So, I, I think you want to avoid-
In, to make it a real meeting, did we, do we have to provide like, public notice?
Yeah.
Okay, how, how many days?
Um, I think I'd have to look at the policies.
Well, I think also what I heard is two or three people could put a draft together that can, then goes out to the whole board, and two, three people is not a meeting.
I, I'm more than comfortable in delegating any type of responsibility to one individual in order to craft this null honesty. Maybe one individual and Lucy. I would be fine with that as the, as the head of the planning board.
It'd be no different if, if, if a few of you wanted to undertake an amendment effort.
Gotcha.
And, and you start looking into the research and everything, and you come back and report on it.
I am going to say, though, I, I would be, I would only be comfortable doing that work if we can get an outline done tonight, so that we can all agree on overall substance of this letter, and therefore, the people who are going to be writing this individually are doing so at the direction of-
Agreed.
You know, again, back to this point of, if we're, if we're saying "we," it's got to be "we." It can't be, someone wrote it, and I said, "Yeah, sure, I guess, yeah," you know? So, let, let's try to get through the outline tonight and call that our goal. And then, and then decide who's going to help craft.
So, do we have, can you check if, if we want to have a special meeting next Monday?
Or even Wednesday? Does it have to be on Monday if it's special? Can you get your notification in, and we can just aim for one next week? Next Wednesday?
Okay. Well, while they're looking that up-
Longer than, no, next Wednesday, not Monday.
Yeah, Wednesday.
Is that their handbook?
Let's keep adding in, let's keep adding in points on the Martell School example. So, we got more info from a party that wasn't the city. Specifically, that's Lewiston Housing Authority, right?
Yeah.
Didn't realize that some information, didn't know some information till public comment session at council. Is that correct?
It was public session here.
Oh, public comment session at-
It was our own public comment session where we learned.
Okay. Staff was unable to pro-
I've got the handbook here.
...by detail that later came out from certain counselors.
That came out at a council meeting.
Yeah.
Maybe the more-
Came out-
At a council meeting.
Meeting, um-
And I wonder if it's allowed, staff wasn't allowed to. It's not the lack of-
It's not what unable, it was, was not allowed to provide because of the, of the executive session.
Staff was restricted from sharing information.
From sharing.
It wasn't about ability, it was about-
From sharing details.
Yeah.
Because of, because of executive session restrictions. I mean, it, it, you know, they, they would have, they just, they can't. Even, even Link would have, it's Jesse, he was restricted by-
Well, can I, I mean, if you're putting meat on the bones here, there was two issues. One is that we were being asked to, the first one was that we were being asked to dispose of the property, and we knew the price, but not the use of the disposition. And then the second one was we were being asked to rezill the property, and again, for the intention of a specific use, of which again, we weren't clear on.
Well, and, we knew the price, but we also didn't know what it was going to cost to do what the city was signing up to do, right? Which was not the demolition, but the abatement and the disposal. So, we just didn't have-
And it was implied- Well, we did get that the second time.
And it was implied-
But we had to demand to get that information.
Yes, yes, well said.
And, and it was implied that, well, we're, we're selling it for $400,000, but our liability would not exceed $400,000. Which would make it cost zero. Which would make it, uh, you know, our, our income zero.
A net gain to the city, yeah.
And, and, and again, I think a big part of that as well is that because of our insurance stating that they do not want to insure that building any longer, that sped up the requirement to, to demo the building. So, I mean, that, that's the thing, like-
So, like, we didn't know about the insurance situation?
Yeah, I didn't-
I did, and I mentioned it that night.
You did?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Okay.
I know I mentioned it because Rick LaChapelle, I had spoken with him, and he had told me. And my response was, "Well, what about Mill Number Five, that's been 30 years?" And, "Well, that's, that's, you know," and then at the, you know, then they come out with, "Well, it's going to cost us $5 million." "Well, it's going to cost us $5 million, no matter what the heck we do, because we've been holding it for 30 years." If we'd have destroyed it, torn it down 30 years ago, it probably would have cost us a million bucks to, to take care of it.
I don't know if I'm signing up to write this thing, but-
Just because of time.
Maybe.
And no matter what we do with it at this point-
I feel like just having it-
It's going to cost us $5 million bucks.
Just having it there without anything happening is a challenge.
Staff has an update on meetings. So, um, special meetings can be called by the chair, provided that at least 24 hours' notice is given. So, you could schedule another meeting.
Well, hot dog. Wow.
Wednesday would work.
Chair Bissin! What do we got?
So, so who's going to, not all staff has to be, right?
Well, so we would need to post it on the website, we'd need to notify the media. So, there is some process that would have to happen.
Can we see if anything on, uh, I'm just starting with days, but like, Thursday through next Wednesday might have an alignment opportunity?
Tuesdays and Thursdays aren't going to work with the councils and budget sessions.
Could you pass me my phone?
Okay.
So, you're looking at either Monday or Wednesday.
Appreciate it, thank you.
And, can we just open up the idea that it's not at 5:30? Like, it's a special meeting, right?
Perhaps during the workday.
It could be, it, well, it could be like, not 6 o'clock. I, I know that I could do Monday, but would need to be done by 5:30. I could do 4 o'clock on Monday. Like, it doesn't, I don't know what flexibility other people have, but it might be easier to find a time that's not late.
I think this Friday afternoon, I'm pretty open.
Gross, on St. Patrick's Day?
Yeah, me too.
Okay, when do you come back?
Um, I'll be back Monday.
Is it, is there anyone who, uh, let's just start at 4 and go later? Is there anyone that 4 o'clock on Monday does not work for?
I could do 4:30.
Great. Anyone that 4:30 on Monday does not work for, looking at staff, too. Love it, right there at the end of the workday, though, huh, Bud? It's not later, huh? 4:30, Monday?
I think we've been entertaining. I hope we've been entertaining.
We're literally figuring out how to like-
We can spend more time with you, that's why I like to do it.
Could one of you be present for 4:30 on Monday?
Who?
It does not require all of you guys, it's a letter. It's just like, your staff and someone has to be here, open the building.
I can be if Shelley can't be, so yes.
Okay.
No, we can do that.
You can tag team it?
Yes.
First half, last half?
Yes.
Only agenda item?
Yes.
4:30, Monday, the 20th. Here, council chambers, like, does it, can it be in the little room with-
We'll confirm for you.
That, we, we have to check that later, yeah.
Okay, great.
Where?
4:30, Monday, City Hall, Room TBD.
Okay.
Great.
Yee-haw.
Everybody's for it?
Cool.
All right, and-
Well, by the way, I called the- She called the meeting because it's going to be, it says-
I was like, when? Nice future vision.
But not the gavel.
Yeah, yeah, right?
Very.
Give it over.
Want me to, can I gavel, can I gavel on your behalf?
Yeah, please do, please do.
And again, as far as the whole ex parte thing, I was just looking at, um, because we, we gave you guys some MMA information today, and they, they speak to this about delivery of substantive information between meetings by email may be permissible as long as it is one-way communication, and no decision of the information occurs outside the meeting by email or otherwise. And to expressly state that the attached information is for discussion at the next board meeting, should invite board members to review and think about it, and should caution board members not to discuss it before the public hea- hearing. And that's where the ex parte comes in.
Great.
So, if we had points we wanted to add that we forgot to mention tonight, we could send it to those who are compiling-
With no response.
With no response.
With the idea that we will discuss them at the next-
Right.
Because the, the whole idea is if somebody, if, I don't know, this continues to devolve, and the council asks for a FOA and wants to know how you guys do all this stuff, you know? To your point, you're looking to be transparent, so we just want to keep that.
We really are. So, um, if there's somebody who volunteers, or two somebodies to be thought partners in volunteering to write this letter, that letter, particularly because the, the point of it is to discuss it and finalize it together before it's final. So, if that letter was shared, these are the thoughts and a starting point for our discussion on Monday. Wouldn't need to go out in a packet because it's not final, and that's the whole point of not like, giving it to the world already. So, we could share those, share a draft letter. This is where we think it landed from our last meeting. Please review this, we will discuss it on Monday. And then at that point, no comments, thoughts, bullets, edits, nothing.
You bring them yourself.
Bring them to Monday for discussion. And that is aces.
I think that's in line with MMA's-
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
That feels like a good path of action.
So, once you get the, you know, the, this done, what I can do is tomorrow morning, I'll send it to everybody. So, who's, who's going to, who's going to do the, the meeting?
I will work with Alex on it, because if I'm going under the bus, I'm bringing him. Great.
I will send this, because, because there's no email, I mean, there's no internet. So, I will send it to you, to all of us on Monday, uh, tomorrow morning, first thing. And then, uh, you guys can work on it, and then you all have our email addresses. So, just send it out to us once you have the, the draft.
That sounds great. Can I ask a question about the content? Go ahead, Josh.
Yeah.
I just, I have a quick question for staff, actually. And that is, David, do you have a mechanism to request, for instance, executive session for the planning board? If you know there's information that was held in the executive session for council?
No, you can't do that.
What? No?
No.
No, you can't do that.
No, also-
Like I'm saying, so if, if it's information that you know about because you're in executive session.
That's the only way I'd know about it.
There's no, there's no mechanism in which you could-
Share it with us.
Hey, I heard they had a good conversation in executive session, and you should ask for more information. Hand signals!
What, what I'm wondering is, can you, could you ask council at that point to like, I'm just wondering if there's a, if there's no mechanism whatsoever to make that, okay?
No, city council can invite us to participate in an executive session. We cannot ask them, because we're under them, or, you know, because of the, because of the way the structure it works.
There's no notes, there's no minutes kept in executive session, right? And they're not, they're not supposed to be making their decisions in executive session. They come back into the public to make the decision. So, really, that deliberation for how they got to whatever their decision is, that's kept under wraps, that's not shared at all.
Well, see, that's an interesting point, too, because based on Robert's rules, executive session, you can keep minutes per executive session, but the reason why we don't is because we don't-
Freedom of Information Act.
FOIA?
I-
It's the, from what I heard, last, at the, the council meeting, last, uh, last council meeting, they said they don't keep minutes for protection against the Freedom of Information Act.
Yeah, any, any-
They can't be asked for notes.
Any city or municipal attorney is going to tell you not to keep them. Main municipal association says not to keep them, so it's not-
Main association of nonprofits makes that suggestion for any governing body as well.
Put it in on, on the desktop, under-
Desktop, okay.
Under planning board.
You could, Josh, I suppose, um-
Where it says, planning board, right there?
We'd have to think about it. I mean, the board, the information Shelley provided you folks tonight, you folks have the ability to go into executive session.
But, oh, because you-
The council's not going to invite you to an executive session necessarily, but you folks could have your own executive session.
I'll save to the real desktop.
We talked about that briefly last time, where we've done that maybe twice since I've been here.
But if we had an executive session about stuff that we didn't know, it wouldn't be possible.
So, I'm going to put that there.
Right, like, you know what I mean? Well, like, I'm just saying, like, why would we hold an executive session if we didn't know the information that was already shared?
Just because this is going to be the one-
Yeah, you, yeah, you don't know what you don't know, and- Right, yeah.
No, there's no mechanism there.
Yeah.
There's no-
Okay.
Fruitless, my friend, fruitless.
It certainly sounds like there's a flow of information problem.
It's good.
I'm just thinking staff would probably be in a good position to say, "Hey, this is probably something that should be shared with other-"
Not if they value their jobs.
Staff isn't in these conversations you're talking about. Like, like, like maybe Heather, being the city administrator, is, maybe Lincoln is, if it's specific to economic development, but like, we're not.
So, you also don't know the, okay.
No, we don't have a book.
No, not at all.
We've been watching with you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Excellent, okay.
Um, can I draw our attention to the bottom of the letter? So-
Yeah, he, he, Alex was just saying he wanted to add some, some substance to the closing.
Such a good idea. I just want to gut check a next step, right? So, we like, do all this preamble, we've got some really good points about like, we'd like to, we'd want to. What is the actual thing that we can ask for by which we can see and measure the acceptance of our request? So, for example, we would like to have a workshop with you where we discuss these items. Or, we would like to open a dialogue, right? Like, are we just sending this and saying, "There, now you know how we feel." Like, there's a result that we want from that, right? And so, what is the call to action at the end of this letter that is an actual invitation to a next step, and that that next step is clear, and they can take it, and we will know that they have taken it? Or not? What is it that we would like?
Michael?
To participate in privileged information when we are making decisions on acquisition and disposition.
So, participate specifically in an executive session?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Or to be apprised of the matters in executive session, in an executive session that we would have to call.
So, I'm just going to state that might be a big first ask, not that it's not ideal.
Let's, let's put ideas down before, before.
This has been long, right? Thirty years.
To, to speak to that point, just really quickly, like, we have, we know when some, we don't know when something's going to move to us, but council does, right? They know when, when, when we're going to have to decide on a disposition. So, we don't have to sit on, in on every executive session at all.
Absolutely not.
Like, it could literally be like a fifteen-minute meeting, being like, "Hey, here are the facts."
Right.
That might be relevant to your decision.
Right, we're not asking, we, we wouldn't ask to, to be, I mean, if they have six conversations about this particular project, deal, whatever, we don't need to be in on all six. We just need to be in on the one.
The last one.
On the last one so that we know what they're looking for.
To me, it sounds like we're, it's an invitation to foster better collaboration on future.
And communication, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Future acquisitions and dispositions that we be apprised of pertinent information so that we can make fully formed decisions. Something along those lines.
Would it, would it be reasonable to say, to offer and to request that when we have major projects, impactful projects, that one of us will go to the council meeting when it's being voted on? And likewise, we would love if one of the council.
Shouldn't be one of us, it should be all of us.
All of us?
Yeah, it can be.
Majority.
Or a majority, yeah.
Don't restrict ourselves.
So, saying majority will go, but then also maybe we request representation to come here? I don't know how that would work.
Well, that's not going to go over.
No, and I think really if, I guess the question is whether or not they want to invite us to attend an executive session.
Because we have to be invited.
I, I just have a question for clarification. So, attending the meeting, like you can always attend the meeting, is the request that you would be notified with more advanced notice that something is coming to you and that would allow you to go to a meeting? Or you want to be invited to the executive session for the item?
Invited to the executive session because in executive session is where they have all of the nitty-gritty that, you know, then, then we're expected to decide without knowing what this nitty-gritty is.
I, so I don't feel that way. And, and here's why. Like, I think executive session serves a purpose and you need, they need a space where they can be messy and not of one mind and speak candidly about a developer or a development or a price. I think what we really want is an invitation to a joint executive session prior to our deliberation. I don't need to be in their executive session.
No, no, absolutely.
I think what we need is for them to, right? Like, but I, but I, I think it's, and maybe it's, it's, I'm not trying to be about semantics, but like, I think it's an invitation for a joint session, potentially an executive or not, right? Like, maybe there's some stuff they can say publicly that gives us more information or that gives us, uh, gives us the invitation to understand their perspective, to, for them to make the case of why they would like to see.
It wouldn't be in public because that was, that was the problem with Martell. It was certain facts were talked about in executive session where Link was in the executive session with them, but then he couldn't give us that information. He specifically said when he was talking to us, "I can't tell you that because."
I'm not asking about staff, and I hear what you're saying, Lucy, but what I'm saying is they also made, there's a couple of different ways, right? But they also then made a vote to discuss in the public council setting that which they discussed in executive. And so, I'm saying they can have an exec.
Things later.
Correct, and we're saying that's part of what we'd like to see improved, right? Is for it to not be after, but for before. Yeah, so if we're talking about the ideal state, I just, I can see a middle ground. There is always going to be information that they are privy to, that they should be privy to, and if we want to be privy to it, we shouldn't run for our own council seat. That's just the reality of it, right? And so, if we, if we're going to acknowledge that reality and try to achieve what is.
However you want to word it, it's fine, I just.
Well, okay, then maybe hear me out to see what, where I'm headed. The opportunity, I think, is to say, "We'd like to have a conversation, whether in executive or outside, where they can share the appropriate and relevant details and their position and how they'd like to see us vote." Like, I think it's about them, if they're going to say, "This was a live or die, this is really important, this is instrumental to our future or to this relationship," those things that they were able to say to the press and in council about why we should have voted a certain way, of which they did not say, and they said all that before they revealed the things from executive. Those comments to us, whether in a privileged or non-privileged scenario, prior to asking us to take a position on something, is, is something that we could achieve. And it doesn't have to require, I don't want us to focus on executive session, it could, it could occur in executive session.
We don't care about the mechanism, what we care about is having good information to make good decisions.
That's fine, however you guys.
Whether it's their rationale or.
Yep.
That works.
So, I think where I was going with my comment that sort of started all that was giving something that's reciprocal, even if it, even if it is not, you know, down-to-brass tax or anything. Like, trying, trying to come up with something where we can show reciprocity, where, you know, we attend, they attend, or like whatever it may be. I don't know, it's symbolic. But I think, you know, if you can do a meaningless symbolic thing, you can build trust that way, right?
Yeah, but I, I don't see where we could be, the reciprocation would.
We'd welcome the opportunity to come, come to city council for a workshop or a small discussion prior to a city council meeting. We come to you on your night to talk about the contents of this lever and the way that we can work better together. Which means there's an opportunity almost immediately for them to say, "Yes, let's have that conversation," instead of being able to say, "Great letter, and the next time a development comes up where we can prove that we heard you, we will." Right? Like, that's, I mean, we want something that's kind of.
I like that.
Now.
Yeah, I think inviting a joint session, since we've already done a few this year anyways, but just to say, clearly, both sides here are frustrated with the outcome and the way that it happened, so why don't we get together and talk about how we can avoid that in the future?
And we're happy to come to you on your name.
Right.
And in all honesty, I think all of the, the joint sessions we've had have been fruitful.
Yeah, yeah.
They've been very helpful.
Yeah, so I think by linking that and saying, "We've already had some productive joint sessions, and so we see the opportunity to do that in light of this situation that occurred," to avoid it from happening again in the future.
Okay. Let's see, what else do we want to have as something we want out of this?
I would be so happy with.
I wonder.
Something measurable.
So, in terms of, in terms of like respect stuff, I know, I have a memory of us, we were talking about the Martell School early, like, there, like, the first time around, we did say something about Gendron, like, "Oh, he is sitting on a lot of properties," or something to that effect, and I could see how that could come off poorly. And I wonder, again, in terms of building trust, like, what's something that we can put out on the table? Go for it.
The opportunity to pen a joint statement about the pro-development stance of this city and sign, co-sign by the, like, there's been so much public commentary, let's put our brain trust together and, and literally make a public statement about, I mean, I think that.
How we want.
Listen, and if it's, if the best we can do is, the planning board and city council of the city of Lewiston are happy to look at all development opportunities and want to see the growth of the city, sincerely, all of us, like, if that's as far as we can get, that is something, and so much farther than we've gotten so far, but that is very measurable. And to get to a joint statement about what we all would like to see, that we like to be able to say, "We are pro-development." Both bodies and the city as a whole, I think that's a powerful thing that, like, we can do.
Perfect.
Sounds good. All right, let's.
Any.
Just, just real quick, just to, just to mention, you brought it up, and so, it's something, it's something, it's something that, that, if it was my fault, I, I certainly, I certainly will try to be more cognizant of what I'm saying and when I'm saying it because offhand comments can come across as something that's, that is very negative when.
Yeah.
When, in fact, that's not the, the fact of the matter is, some of the, the largest landholders in this community, we need them to develop here. We desperately need them to, and we need to incentivize them.
Well, you need everything.
So, so if I've, if, again, I think it's all about like how we, how we consciously say things.
I would have remembered if it was you. But I, what I, the distinct memory I had was like, because that was my first meeting. That was my first meeting, I was like, "Wow, that, that's kind of spicy. That's kind of, that's kind of rough here for, for a public board. That, that's, that's a bit outspoken." And I don't think we should go back and, you know, I don't want this to be like, "Oh, it was you, you know, Lucy, you know, twenty lashes for misbehav," you know, I don't think that's good, but I think, you know, again, like, it's about extending that olive branch. Like, if there are places where we need to apologize as a board, I think we should recognize that and we should, we could do better. And that's, that's great. If you can't improve in your life, you're, you're now delusional, you don't.
Absolutely subscribe to that.
Okay, so should we call it a night?
Yes, I think so.
Do you want me to gavel for you?
Sure.
Wait, a motion to adjourn.
Oh, motion to adjourn.
Wait, wait, wait.
Wait, 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 wait.
Minutes.
Minutes.
Minutes that poor Linda rewrote three times today.
Yeah, let's swap, I'll save this and, okay, so.
So, you're going to table, make a motion to table this conversation to the next agenda?
I'm sorry?
Or continue it?
Continue.
Sorry, not table, continue.
I make a motion to continue this agenda item to the next special meeting of the planning board as requested and confirmed by our planning board chair, Lucy Bissin.
I'll second.
Second, yeah. They did it, everybody.